And Gowan is not available. So, to begin. Oh, and as well, it is a voting meeting. It's not a workshop. We'll have two voting meetings in the month of August. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting the Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the meeting. And there'll be two opportunities, one after we discuss the items before we vote and one before we adjourn. So Linda, could we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Byer? Mr. Marusty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowan? Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Rizlevich? Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Thank you, Linda. So now on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Scott, do you have the flag?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, Linda and Scott, could you guys lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we had one communication come in before the agenda was finalized. That was on July 17th from Andrea Alexander on outdoor classrooms. We have had one or two other communications since the agenda was finalized and those will be noted in the agenda for the next meeting on August 24th. So we have the minutes for our virtual public meeting on July 13th. And I'd like to move that we approve those minutes. After I have a second, the board could discuss those. So can I have a second, please?
Second.
Does anybody on the board have any comments, questions, or other issues? Okay, if no, then could we take a vote, Linda?
Mr. Marusty?
Yes, and Scott, oh, you did it. I was just gonna say, you don't need Monique.
Oh, Monique is here?
Monique just arrived.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Hi, Monique.
Hi, everyone.
Um, Monique, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
And there's Rob.
Oh, boy. Um, okay. Uh, Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yeah.
Mr. Rizlevich, we are voting on the minutes, just to keep bringing you up to speed. And Ms. Coleman, I'm sorry, I didn't say that to you. Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have no student representative report tonight, as is typical of the of the summer meetings. But we will go right into the superintendent's report, which will include a presentation on the school district's COVID-19 school reentry plan and this district's ESA corrective action plan. Before we do that, though, I have to report that we have a resignation from the board, which is arrived on August 1st. So I need to announce that Ruth Byer has resigned from the Board of Education effective August 1st. A few words about Ruth and her service and on the board for the past four and a half years. So Ruth has been on the Board of Education for the last four and a half years, starting her service on the board about the same time as I did. She started in January and I started in February. We sat next to each other for all those years, for most of the years, and she and I developed a wonderful relationship. Ruth was on the Personnel Committee, the Excellence and Equity Committee, and she was a voice for the children in the district with special needs. And she will continue, I'm sure, to be a voice for those children, excuse me, and for all children. We'll have Ruth back to a meeting later this year to recognize her work in the community and for the Board of Education and for the school district. And we greatly appreciate her service. So thank you, Ruth. I don't know if you're listening, but thank you so much for your work. Now, the board, the board will be taking the board will be taking applications for the open seat. The way this, the way this worked out, there will be an open seat from the appointment date, which will be the September 14th meeting of the Board of Education, until through the end of this year, all through 2021. So whoever applies will be on the ballot, if, you know, if they choose, would be on the ballot at the end of would be on the ballot in November of 2021, or at least serve through the end of 2021. And Linda, could you just mention what the procedure is, please?
Yes. So we are accepting a letter of interest with a brief statement, resume, or some paragraph or something that explains your background and I guess why you feel, you know, that you would be suited for the board. Let's see, you, okay, letter of interest and resume to the board. We will be announcing the vacancy on the district website. We will ask for the letters of intent or interest to be sent to the to me in the board office. You can email me. My email address is LHOFLA, that's H-O-E-F-E-L-E at HPschools.net, but this information will be posted on the district website. We will, are we going to interview at the next meeting? Is that the intent?
I believe the intent will be to interview on the September 14th meeting.
Okay, so the, yes, that makes sense. The letters and resumes will be due no later than I haven't set a date. One second. The Tuesday before the next board meeting, so that is Tuesday, August 18th. No later than 3:00 PM on that date. Candidates must be a registered voter and resident of Highland Park. And the process will be as follows. At the August 24th board meeting, the board members will review the letters from candidates and will schedule the candidates. You'll receive a letter indicating that you will be need to be available at the September, was it the 14th?
14th.
14th board meeting, at which time the board will hold interviews of each of the candidates that are interested in the position. At the August 24th board meeting, the board will discuss also a standard, setting up the standard list of questions that will be formulated to present to the board, the candidates at the September 14th board meeting. Following the interviews on the September 14th board meeting, the board members will recess to executive session to discuss the interviews and hopefully they will come to a resolution and come out and they will take a vote on a candidate. And the candidate would be seated that time, at the, later at that meeting. Are there any questions?
I would just like to add that the interviews will be done in public as required by the Open Public Meetings Act.
Yes.
And don't be shy. I've done it twice. I've been appointed to two different boards and it's very rewarding work for the community. Okay, so on to the superintendent's report. Before, before Dr. Taylor starts his presentation, I do want to say very few words about the school reentry plan. We are required by the state of New Jersey to to hand, hand into the Department of Education a school reentry plan, which includes a hybrid, in-person, and remote education and has a list of requirements that we must give to them based on the guidelines. We chose to make a very comprehensive plan and that tries to go down as much as we can to actually what is going to happen as opposed to just filling out the request for the state and getting them to approve it. This means that the document that we'll be discussing and which will be on the website tomorrow, along with a video from Dr. Taylor and letters home to parents, that document is changing and will change. And I expect that at the August 24th meeting, we'll have another discussion, perhaps even vote on changes, even though it won't go back likely to the state. But especially since most of the education, if not all, depending on what the state, the governor and legislature does and the conditions on the ground during the month of August, most or all of the education will be remote. We have to do an exceptional job of that. So we will be spending the month of August and into September and perhaps longer working on doing a excellent, productive, remote education job. Even if we were coming back in person on September 8th, which per the plan, most of our students would not, even if we would, most students and most students' time taken as a whole will not be in person. And much of their time won't be in person. Much of the time will be remote. So we have to plan for that very carefully and very well. So that part of the plan will be added to and we'll make changes to the plan as we move forward. So, oh, and one further thing, Dr. Taylor set up an email address, which he'll share with you for anyone with comments, questions, suggestions to email to the district. And there'll be filters on that email, so it'll go to the right person in the administration, the leadership team, who will review it for the different sections of the plan. The plan is now between 35 and 40 pages long. It will likely grow. In any event, with that as a background, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Taylor and he'll give us the presentation on the plan.
Before, thank you, Mr. Krieger. Before I get to the plan, and I do recognize that the vast majority of visitors to the meeting are interested in knowing about the plan, I must spend a few minutes writing Nicole Krupsky to address a word about the ESA corrective action plan. Something are legally bound to have the board approve. So with that, I'd like to briefly introduce Nicole, reintroduce her, and then have her spend a few minutes talking to the board. Ms. Krupsky was most recently our supervisor of district initiative and district initiatives and funded programs. One of her responsibilities was to administer the, what we call the ESA grant. It's the federal grant that provides funds to support our most in need students. We were monitored. It happens to every school district every three, four, or five years. We were up. Fortunately, we were not cited for any egregious violations, so we were not docked in any way, shape, or form. But like all districts, we have to have a corrective action plan to take into account any recommendations that are made. So I'd like, Ms. Krupsky now to spend a few minutes to talk about our action plan. Go ahead, Ms. Krupsky.
Hi, how are you? So as Scott said, we weren't cited on anything, but there were findings that we needed to correct and those corrections were put into place. Some of them were easy. There were wordings on policies that they wanted to see changed and those have all been changed. Some of them took a little bit more work, such as our Title I criteria. One of the things that the state wants to have is at every building level, you have to have a list of who your Title I children are. And the Title I children are those who are our greatest in need academically, who are most in danger of failing without any interventions put into place. So in order to decide who those students are, you need to have a data point spreadsheet. And this spreadsheet was created, working with the four principals to decide what data we wanted to see on there and what our levels of concern were. So each, each building now has these data point spreadsheets. They're fluid documents. Students can go on to them and come off them as needed. That was also one of the areas that they wanted to see improvement on. They wanted clear-cut entrance and exit criteria. One of the areas that they cite, that they said that we needed to strengthen were the exit criteria. We need to make it clear how a student could exit the Title I program because they should not be in it for the full year unless they need it for the full year. So often our Title I programs, they were in it for the full run and there was no revisit of whether or not they could exit. The letters that go home to the parents, they would also like to have in those letters what the entrance and exit criteria are, so parents can make an informed decision whether or not they would like students to participate in those Title I programs. At the high school level, they said that our Title I program was not a clearly defined and cohesive program and it's much harder to spend the money that is allotted for Title I at a high school level. So one of the things that we put in place, they don't want to see drop-in tutoring and they don't want tutoring to be for what the students are working on in the class that they currently have. They want it to be skill building, which it's difficult to get high school kids who want to come on their own time to work on skills building. So we did work to develop clear-cut entrance, exit criteria, and what skills those would look like. So those are things that have been put into place for when we can get them up and running at the high school. Other areas that they wanted to see improvement on are Title I parent nights. And I have worked with Brooke to help her put into place things that can be done again, once the district is up and running, for parent engagement night and parent Title I information nights. So that was the broad of what specifically the state wanted to see us do and all the pieces have been put into place.
If the board has any questions or comments, please use your virtual hand to comment or question. Okay. If not, I want to thank Ms. Krupsky for coming out during the summer. These are not her work hours. Graciously provided some of her time. So thank you very much, Ms. Krupsky. I'm looking forward to seeing you somehow, on some level, in September.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole.
I'm gonna shift gears now. I have to, before I do that, I have to give a shout out to Jennifer Forhies, who privately text, chatted me the directions on how to get rid of the chime, so there's no more chime. Well, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, now, a very important part of our evening. Information about our reentry plans. Give me one second here, I'm gonna share my screen. Before I actually dive deep into the plan, I want to first thank 11 people. There were 60 people who were actually involved in this effort and will continue to be involved in this effort, but there are 11 people in particular who I found within an extraordinary amount of time and shared an extraordinary amount of input, much of which was incorporated into the plan. First, Christina Nikosia, who was our Director of Curriculum Instruction. Thank you, Christina. Our local professional union president, Keith Presty. Keith and I have been meeting once, twice a week for the last several months about a myriad of issues. Janie Mazur, who's the high school nurse. Janie was the trooper who was helping track down quotes for PPE. Mike O'Donnell, I text Mike four, five, six times a day about a myriad of issues, most recently replacing the ballasts on the windows at Irving. Jim Polos, who's our local OEM coordinator and all-around jack-of-all-trades when it comes to crisis planning. And our board members in general, but in particular, Mark Krieger and Ann Gowan. Mark, Ann, and I, gosh, I think we've become quite close over the last, if we weren't close prior to this process, we certainly became close in the last couple of months, frequent calls and conference calls. We had several parents who also put a lot of effort and time of their own into this plan. Andrea Alexander, Rebecca Hirsch, Rob Scott, and Bill Winfrey. I appreciate all the attention that they gave us. Now, while I'll be summarizing the plan tonight, the details will be presented tomorrow. Tomorrow's a big day. You'll be receiving a Honeywell at 11:00 AM from me that will alert you by phone to all the things that will be published come in the, come the afternoon, about midday. At the same time, our secretaries will be sending out paper letters to be sure that we are connecting to everyone, regardless of their technology access. The letters have been translated into Mandarin and Spanish as well. You'll see tomorrow afternoon, when you go to our website, a pop-up with directions to see a 12-minute video that I strongly recommend you watch. It's my opportunity to personally talk to you about the plan and take a deep dive into the details. Details of which you will, not only will you get the detailed plan in PDF format, it'll be on the website, our Facebook page. You'll be emailed as well, that information tomorrow. You'll also see a three-page summary that I created in case you don't want to read the 30, what I think is now a 37-page document. And you'll also get something very important. The reentry decision form, the reentry decision form will be online. Except those who don't have access, we'll be providing paper copies. And it'll be your opportunity to let us know if your children can go to school in person or opt for the remote, or what we're now calling virtual learning opportunities. So tonight, we have 142 people here, which is a lot. My recommendation would be to hold your comments and questions, if you can, until after you have a chance to read the plan. And as Mark pointed out, at the end of my presentation, you'll be provided an email address that you can use to share concerns or have questions posed. Okay, now let's, let's talk about the development of the plan. As I pointed out earlier, there were 60 people involved in presenting this plan. I'm very, very proud of the way we engage stakeholders. The stakeholders, by the way, included representatives from just about every constituency group I can, I can think of. The, the group started meeting in May to focus on reentry. Then, in June, we found out from the governor that he had intentions to reopen schools for in-person instruction. So a task force, a primary task force immediately went to work and then a secondary task force, mostly made up of parents and some other members of our faculty chimed in to produce what you'll see tomorrow. Now, all through this month, knowing that the condition on the ground to which Mark referred is changing daily, if not hourly. Just today, I understand the governor made an announcement about new rules governing indoor gatherings. We have to be meeting and talking and planning almost not a daily basis. So I do anticipate that this V1, version one, version of the document will morph into, perhaps it'll be two, be three, be four, and beyond. So let's now look at the plan itself. First of all, the schedule. Everyone will have an opportunity to have their children either learn full-time from home, what we're calling virtual learning, or in-person, what I'm referring to as a hyper-schedule. And I'll talk about what those look like in just a minute. The school day for all at this time will run from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We may stagger the start by a few minutes to accommodate transportation. You have to be mindful that if, if we do forge ahead and go in-person, we will have the need for more buses than we previously employed, knowing that we have to maintain more space than we had before. So it'll be less kids on buses, meaning more bus, meaning perhaps a greater need for us to, to delay the start. But regardless, it'll be a four-hour day and it'll be frank around a nine-to-one timeframe. All of our students who qualify for subsidized meals will receive breakfast in their classroom. First period will operate like we do for after the bell, which has the kids eating their breakfast in their classroom. The breakfast packages are placed in grab-and-go style bags and left at the front door of the classrooms. Lunch will also be provided to the students who qualify. They can take those grab-and-go style lunches with them home. Now, for all students, the current plan has us building in a day that we refer to as a catch-up day. It's also an opportunity, besides providing the chance for students to meet with teachers one-to-one or in very small groups, office hour style. It's also an opportunity for us to address what's really very important to me, I think this community knows, the social, emotional, mental wellness needs of our kids. We are looking at potentially doing away with this catch-up day. It may be that we pilot the catch-up day to see what the need is and then make an alteration if necessary after we begin the year. But that catch-up day will apply for both virtual learning, all these students, and the in-person students who come for a hybrid program. So if you opt for your child to come to school in person and your child attends either Irving or Bartle, he, she, they will begin the school year September 8th. The middle and high school in-person students will begin their year in a virtual learning-only mode September 8th and then three weeks later, return for in-person instruction. And there are several reasons for that. One, and I think the primary reason is there is research, a plethora of it that I've read, that shows older children are more likely to transmit the virus through air contact than younger children. So what we'd like to do is go slow, take a slow and steady approach to reopening our middle and high school so that we're not left having to open our upper-grade schools and then close midstream. We do want to begin our young kids as soon as we can because this board and the 60 stakeholders and I all agree, our little ones desperately need to interact with the people they miss, the teacher and their peers. Let's talk first about in-person instruction and then I'll talk about virtual instruction. Those students who return for in-person instruction would be placed in two groups, and I'll refer to now as cohorts. We're dividing the students because we recognize that we need as much space as we can get. The Department of Ed guidance shows a need for students to be kept six feet apart. We've been realistic here in the district and recognize that students, especially young ones who are sitting in chairs six feet apart, are likely going to be moving in and out of their seats for some point in four hours. So what we are counting for is seven feet spacing. We're going to be working very hard to try to bring our little ones back en masse, but we'll only know if we can do that after August 11th, which is when we should have the vast majority of the reentry decision-making form data back in our hands. Now, the cohorts that come to school will come for in-person instruction for two days and you'll see tomorrow that we lay out what that schedule would look like in the appendix. That's an example of the detail to which I referred earlier that you can read tomorrow. Those students who return to school in person will continue their learning virtually for two days. So, if you're student cohort one, you'll come in Monday, Tuesday, you'll have a Wednesday catch-up day, checking with counselors, mental health professionals, and then continue learning virtually Thursday and Friday. Cohort two will learn virtually Monday, Tuesday, check-in day Wednesday, come in for in-person instruction Thursday and Friday. And as I mentioned earlier, once we know that we can safely bring back our Irving and Barnum kids to return for a, for now, a four-day in-person week, we'll, we'll do that, but we'll only do it if we can assure the absolute safety and health protection of those children. Now, if you opt to have your children participate in a virtual instruction-only program, those kids will be expected to attend a four-hour day and attendance will be taken. It'll be following the same protocols that we already have in place, as if this was a traditional school year. Instruction will be live and interactive. And if you hear that, that buzzword synchronous, it's reference to the, the interactive nature of live instruction. We heard you, who shared with us your concerns about what went down in March through June very clearly, and we are actively working to train our teachers so that they can not just interact with their, with their students, but do so in a highly engaging manner. And we talk about that in detail in the plan that you'll read tomorrow. We have, thanks to the board's support and Dr. Nacogia's hard work, relentless effort, we have been able to provide and will provide, in addition to those who don't already have it, tablets for all of our Irving and Barnum students. They'll be using a platform called, actually Irving will be using a platform called Seesaw, Barnum will be using Google Classroom, and enough Chromebooks to be sure all of our middle and high school students have them, even if they break or if for some reason they get lost. So we are very confident that we can provide access to all of our kids. I didn't mention in the slide, but it's worth noting, we've also purchased hotspots so that we can add to the complement of hotspot licensing that we already implemented in the spring, to be sure all of our kids have internet access as well. If there's any silver lining to this pandemic, and there are not many, but if there is at least one, it is that we have now had the opportunity because of necessity to take our work to provide a technology access to all of our kids to a whole nother level. Now, what happens if your kids come to, to, to school in person? And of course, if you're a teacher here in the room, how will we protect you to be sure you're safe? Well, first of all, we're going to be requiring everybody to fill out every day a very simple, five-second required form to complete that will simply have parents, guardians and faculty personnel check off a box if they have certain symptoms. Now, we've been actually using a symptom tracking form, and it's been working out very successfully. I'll give you a great example of how it's been successful. We incorporated the tracking form this summer, starting July 13th, when I required all of our 12-month employees to return to their offices in person. I set up a system with Dr. Nacogia's help that has me receive an email, me personally, an email whenever somebody checks off the wrong box, a box that might present a flag. The person has went, has gone to one of the somewhat 30 states that are on the no-travel list, person has a fever, person has other symptoms as indicated by the CDC that could indicate a COVID-19 infection. Today, as a matter of fact, I did get such a, an email from somebody who had traveled to a state out of, out of New Jersey that's on the restricted list. And that person, who I spoke with personally, is now required to quarantine for two weeks. And that will be the case here. Now, I won't be getting all the emails from the 18 or 1900 and so on people who'll be filling out these forms. We're going to develop a system so that the schools manage those forms. We will also be screening temperature of everyone who walks in the building each day. We've purchased infrared thermometers, and as you'll read in the health protection section of the plan, we, we have some protocols that will surround how we're going to operate the temperature screening process. Still some work to be done in this area, but the crux of it is there and it's good. And we have the equipment that we need to make it work right now if we had to. Face coverings will be required to be worn by all. By the way, the stakeholder groups incorporated the requirement that students and personnel who will be receiving three reusable masks, by the way, are all where there's some kind of face covering. The original New Jersey Department of Ed guidance for reentry did not require students to wear these face coverings, but as some of you may be aware, today Governor Murphy declared that will be the case. So, I'm glad that we're now in sync with the state. Barriers will be installed in all offices and small group learning spaces. Small group learning spaces include things like the child study team offices, some of our basic skill instruction rooms. We have a couple of special needs classrooms that are, that are small and require an additional layer of protection. Hand sanitizer pumps will be installed in every room and office. And I'm already seeing them pop up, they're going up as we speak. I'm very thankful that Mike O'Donnell was able, our facilities director, was able to, to get a jump on supplies and, and we're in good shape so far in terms of getting the stock that we need. So that's the schedule broken down. Again, if you have questions, concerns, I encourage you to read the plan in detailed form and watch my presentation, video presentation tomorrow, and then pose additional questions if you have any, if any arise after reading the plan by email. Again, you'll get the email address in just a little bit. Couple of other things I want to go over that are very important. As a district, and more and more I'm seeing as a community, I'm very happy to see this as a Highland Park resident of 24 years, we are, we're committing wholly to providing every single student, whatever he, she, they needs, to, to do the same, to have the same learning opportunities as their peers. Equity is very important to us. So, we're still building on our equity plan and you'll probably see additional details in the next version that, that, that will come out in a couple of weeks and then likely approved on the August 24th. But one thing I can tell you now, and I know this will be a very helpful thing for those who are struggling to make ends meet with daycare, we will provide before and after care. I spoke with the coordinators of both the Irving and Barnum program today. They're very excited to have the opportunity to offer before and after care. We'll adjust the hours as needed so we can accommodate parents and guardians. And I had a vision for providing daycare in case schools close. I was also given a positive reception from the before and after care coordinators, who I would task with creating a, an extension of that program into an all daycare program. It's not something which I can wholly commit to because I do have to see how things play out in the next month as regards the, the pandemic here in New Jersey. But it's certainly something I know is important and I'm looking very closely at, at doing. We've also committed to having those students who we know lack resources for socioeconomic reasons or otherwise, and, and other kids who might have challenges not related to their socioeconomic status, home support. And so what we'll be doing is identifying these students, case management style. I have to give a shout-out to Ruth Byer. I hope she's either listening or will watch this video. Ruth, while she was on the board, impressed upon me the importance of trying to create some kind of case management system that would, in a sense, something beyond the INRS process, the intervention referral process, that would in a sense have us, like we do for our special needs kids, assign people, counselors or others, to focus on the needs of, of a core group of kids who we've got, we can't let slip, we can't let slip through the cracks. So, so I thank Ruth and, and then it's something which we're going to commit to. Now I want to talk about another important issue to me, and that's mental wellness. I am very, very concerned about how we're all reacting to the last five months of isolation, relative isolation. You may, you may know, you may have picked up on the theme of the closing statements I make in my Honeywells. Not only do I want people to be healthy and strong, but I also want them to be mentally positive because that, of course, we know affects everything, right? So, we're building in activities that will help bring back our kids and, and, and into a sense of community. K-12 will be incorporating these activities for both virtual-only students and our in-person students. And our teen center has activated itself along with the school psychologists in other schools outside of the middle, high school teen center realm, so that we have, so that we have, in essence, been able to create a multi-tier system, much like the RTI model for the educators in the room, a multi-tier system to be proactive in helping kids manage their mental health needs, but reactive, that's what tier two and tier three interventions are if necessary. Counseling will be provided for both virtual learning students and in-person students. We had some success in the spring with our teen center staff in particular, providing that kind of remote support. As I had mentioned earlier, meals will be provided. I do want to emphasize that for those who either are now here watching or will be watching the recording. This is also memorialized in our plan. It's really, really important that we continue providing the meals we did in the spring. It's my intention to set up a location, not only here onsite for the virtual learning-only kids who might need meals, breakfast and, and lunch, but also the kids who might need those, those resources on Cedar Lane, which is really the most remote part of the township. So we'll continue setting up that, that, that system. I want to round things out by just talking about what we're doing for staff and then I'm going to share a couple of reminders about the, the way I'm communicating everything tomorrow. We'll be starting a mini professional development academy. I call it a mini academy because it's going to be three weeks and, and because while we'll be offering a plethora of activities, it might not be the scale that we offer throughout the 10-month year. We're timing this academy to lead right into the beginning of the school year with the goal being to get all the folks who've been returning from vacation, from their July early office vacation, to, to, to get completely in the mode of virtual learning. The summer mini PD academy workshops will be focused solely on virtual learning best practices that include everything from how to incorporate independent, self-directed students, self-directed activities, to creating, fostering an environment, a virtual environment that's warm and nurturing. We'll continue this professional development in September as second and third. I just need to make a note, the summer PD academy will be open to anybody who volunteers to take part. We cannot require our faculty to, to attend the academy, but we have a very, very professional group of people here, teachers and counselors. I have a feeling we're going to be seeing quite a number of people sign up in those workshops. Let's talk a little bit about tomorrow, then I'm going to leave you with that email address. So, like I said earlier, there'll be a video presentation, it's about 12 minutes long. I encourage you to watch it. I've Honeywell'd people to the, to the nines. I think it's the time for you to at least see me as well as hear me. And I, what I do in my video is I do show you certain parts of the plan that you might want to hone in on. There will be made active tomorrow afternoon a school reentry webpage, and that'll be right there on the front page of the district website. So, all you have to do is, is go to HPschools.net, boom, it'll be there for you. All that information will be in the paper letter being mailed home in case, for whatever reason, folks don't check your email or catch wind of all this. And of course, I'll be using the Facebook, the district Facebook account to broadcast all this information. One of the most helpful things that all of our parents and guardians can do, and our personnel, but I've already mentioned this to them separately, is to complete by next Tuesday, the reentry decision form. That form, I believe it's four questions and three of them are just having you provide us the names of your children and, and what school, and what, what school they, they reside. And then tell us if they will be returning for in-person instruction or will be staying home for virtual-only discussion. I anticipate that the detailed plan and my presentations will help inform your decision. If we don't hear from you by August 11th, you can expect a call from us. We're going to be tracking you down. And finally, I close with the email address that you can use if you have any questions or concerns. You'll receive an autoresponder that acknowledges we received the email. If you don't get the autoresponder, either try again or you can, at that point, you can probably email me directly, but I'm pretty sure you're going to get that autoresponder and then we'll be getting back to you as soon as we can. Please try to be patient or try to turn those responses around within days, not weeks, especially knowing that I'm asking you to get this form information back.
So, until now, we have some well, and some outside of town?
I have to ask somebody to mute themselves. I just took care of that. All right, so with that, I'm going to open up for questions or thoughts from the board. Mr. Krieger, can I open it up?
Yes, please. I would, I would ask that rather than chatting questions with the community, please wait for public comments. I've answered one or two, but they're coming in and we have answers, but keeping up with that is impossible. And if, if we have a public comment, then the person asking can get an answer, which everyone will hear. And we'll try to go through the, we'll try to go through the regular board business quickly enough so that we can get to public comment when it's not too late. I also want to say that the, the plan has to be given to the state. I don't think I made myself clear before, I'm going to try again. The plan has to go to the state. 60 people in the community worked on it. We are going to continue as a full community over the next month, working on it over the next six weeks. At the next meeting toward the end of the month, we anticipate the plan will have changes. Based on what the changes are, we may reissue it to the state, but everyone will have a chance to put their thoughts in. The basic minimum of what the state needs, it's not so basic minimum, it's up to 37 or 38 pages. Lots of it is pretty straightforward and it's, again, what the state needs in order for us to implement the plan. That has to go in. So, I, I, I would ask the board if you have questions. I, I don't at the moment, but, members, please let us know if you have questions.
Mark, I'm reading the chat screen and I will, if you're, if you're comfortable with me doing so, I will answer some of the questions that I'm, I'm reading. It might help to allay some concerns.
So, but Scott, here I think is what the issue is, right? In the middle of a normal board meeting, we wouldn't be able to do that, right? We can't have people shout out from the audience their questions and then have us answer them. So this is kind of the problem of this format. So, personally, I think the best thing to do, I mean, I want to say two things. I understand people's frustration, right? Because we now as a board can engage in a conversation based on information that they don't have, which is not typical. So I hear people's frustration that we're about to vote on a plan that they have not seen and they're getting just more vague details in a presentation. And we are now going to be able to ask questions based on a full fleshed-out plan that we've read that they have not seen. So I understand the frustration here, but I don't think the proper response is to then start answering individual questions in the chat because we don't conduct board business that way. My question would be, why aren't we releasing the plan now? So, you know?
Right, so, my reasoning has been because I want to hear from the board and whatever views the board recommends we make before it's approved, I will incorporate into that plan. I did not want to present the plan prematurely without getting board input. I do want to point out to the public, and you as well, Darcy, that we can admit as many updated plans in the Department of Education as we wish. Department of Education wants to know that we have at least a minimum The Department of Education wants to know that we have at least a minimum safety plan to bring our kids back if we go back in person, add virtually, but we can provide them a second version and a third version. So I don't want, there shouldn't be. I don't want people to think this is it. This is the final night that we're actually updating a plan that will be golden with the state.
And I think that sounds like part of the frustration, is a plan's going to be submitted, and then does that lock us into a plan? And it needs to be made clear that that does not lock us into a plan. We're still taking community input into account, and there's, I mean, something could happen tomorrow that's going to make us shut the whole darn thing down. I mean, I think this is kind of part of the insanity of this process, is that districts are being asked to pretty much plan for every possible accounted, you know, scenario, and it's, it's somewhat preposterous.
And Darcy, I did have to also point out, we had a significant number of, well, I talked about stakeholders, I'm also talking about parents and guardians. We, we are a borough of 1.8, 1.8 square miles, but there are a lot of us that have strong opinions about how this should go. It's impossible for this district, board, and myself and my leadership to possibly account for everybody's opinion, but we did a, I think a yeoman's job getting stakeholders involved. And it's not a perfect plan. I think I pointed that out in the presentation I made. It's not a perfect plan. We can make it better, and we will.
Scott, regarding the, the choices that parents and guardians are going to be making, if they make those plans in the next week, week and a half, what have you, once they make those, can they then go back and change their minds?
That's something I'll have to get back to you about. I'm not prepared to answer that question. It's certainly reasonable to allow people to change their mind. For instance, if we're in the third or fourth week of August and the pandemic takes a serious turn here in New Jersey for the worse, yet the governor still encourages us to have in-person instruction, I anticipate there'll be parents who want a chance to get their, to pull their kids out of in-person instruction. What I am not opposed to doing is exploring how we can go back out and have a second round of reentry decision making. The problem with, that I'm going to have to consider, which is why I can't give you 100% firm answer right now, is how to then make adjustments to our schedule accordingly. The reason why we want the data from parents right now, guardians as soon as we can get it, right now, as soon as we get it, because we start, we have to, we need to consider such things as, can we bring all of our Irving students back on mask? Do I have enough teachers who can teach remote instruction for all the kids who'll be staying home for, I keep calling it remote, but virtual instruction? If not, I'm going to have to make accommodations to help that along. So it's going to be tricky to make last-minute decisions, but I'll certainly consider this with the team and the stakeholders.
Scott, one of, one of my concerns, though, is that we're asking the parents to make a decision based on a plan that's not 100% fleshed out, and we need those responses to refine the plan and make the plan stronger because we need to have an idea of how many students would be coming back to school, how many would be opting for all virtual. But we can't realistically rely on the parents to be comfortable with the decision that they're making based on a plan that's not 100%. So we're kind of put ourselves in a corner by not having enough information, I think, in the document that I've reviewed. I think I'm comfortable enough with it to make a decision for my child, but I think that for many other parents, they would still have some hesitancy based on what they have in front of them tomorrow.
It's a very valid concern. Rob, the plan as it stands includes what I think would be the deciding factors for a parent. I'm a father of an incoming senior like you. I think I have enough information now, but what I'm looking at is the schedule. Am I comfortable having my child come back for two days? If so, okay, I'm going to do that. If it's one day, I mean, if, sorry, if it's three or four days in person, I might not be so comfortable doing that. But right now, as it stands, it's going to be two days. And I frankly, at the upper grades, I don't see there being much change in terms of the in-person model. At the lower grades, I've already told you that there will be a change if we can accommodate kids to come back four days. Regarding health protection, again, I don't, except for one, you know, item right now that I think is outstanding, and that's testing. And I am actively looking into working with local government to see if we can actually engage in a, in a mass testing program, COVID-19 testing program. Again, a lot of the internals and the fundamentals are there. I don't see things drastically changing, but I'll go back to what Ron Magaziner said, and it's a very good point. We, we need to consider how, if at all, we can allow parents to give us that second, that second choice about their options.
And at the same time, I think we also need to recognize that, as people consider and read through, make their own determination, that it, we're asking a serious question. We are, we, we need their input.
So. Other questions or comments from the board? Chris?
Hi, oh, sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Same question for the staff. At what point are you asking them to make a commitment, and can they change later?
By August 11th, and I would likely apply the same rule or same standard to staff as I would to students if we, if we make any alteration to the decision-making plan process. But right now, August 11th, people, I have to know from staff if they're going to be returning, or if they have a legitimate reason why they have to work remotely.
I just, I wanted to comment really quickly that, you know, this has been chaotic this time, you know, to say the least. And I think that any plan that, you know, anyone could have come up with is going to be, you know, difficult to implement and also feel comfortable with since there is such a change to our, you know, traditional way of schooling. But I know that I said this in emails to everyone before, but I just wanted to say it publicly, that I, I feel like whatever time we have between now and September, I would like to think that we focus on reimagining what our priorities are and coming up with something that doesn't, isn't contingent on a thousand other things that we couldn't possibly know in the future. It's, it's hard to express it any better than that. I'm sorry if it's not very clear, but I do think that this is challenging us to be really creative thinkers. So I would hope that the rest of the time that we have from now until September is a time for creative problem solving and really not being so attached to the traditional ways that we've been experiencing school, because this is unfortunately not, I don't know when this will end. I don't know if anyone does. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board? I see, somebody with an iPhone raised hand, but I'm not sure if that's a board member. So I'm going to lower that individual's hand. Mr. Krieger, I don't see any other hands from the board.
Okay.
I think Monique is trying to raise her hand.
Sorry. I completely get to the virtual hand.
I'm sorry, Monique, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
That's much better.
Okay. I think my question is just about, first, I wanted to echo Darcy's sentiments that, you know, I understand the frustration, and I really wish that there could have been a more, a process more open beyond just the stakeholder groups that were together, just to have more voices involved in the plan, as it will be submitted tomorrow. And I think I hear you saying there will be some corrective actions moving forward to make sure that there's community, public input, but I just want to be more clear on how that's going to, how that's going to look. So I think I would want to hear something a bit more clear about how that would happen. And then my second question is about, I guess, just picking you back off of Michelle. I'm just not quite, the remote learning program. And to me, it seems like there's so much more work that has to be done around that, and I totally respect the fact that we, there will be reiterations of this plan. I think my concern is just the four-hour block of time in the remote learning environment and how that will be structured so that it's not, you know, four hours of Zoom class after Zoom class, you know, for, for our students. I'm sure that's being considered, you know, by administration and leadership, but I did just want to kind of raise that, that concern that I have.
So yeah, I'll answer that question first, and then I'll go back to what I think is your question about the process going forward, right? Until September?
Right.
Now, in the reentry plan tomorrow, you'll see an appendix that includes details about different models of instruction that we're going to be using in virtual, in the virtual instruction mode. It also lists some of the applications, web-based applications we're going to use. I think the schedules for all the schools, especially the middle and high school, will also be enlightening. You'll see that we're, we're trying to incorporate specials, special subjects and whatnot. So essentially, we want to replicate the live instruction model virtually as best we can. Student goes through a schedule over the course of four days, and that is exposed to the different subject areas. But I think it'd be helpful if you see, and if you did have a chance over the weekend to see the document I shared with the board, you'll note in the appendix that it does include a lot of those strategies. So that's one thing I can share with you now. The other question you had about process, I can tell you, there'll be meetings throughout August of the stakeholder groups. I will be receiving, I'm sure, questions and concerns via the email account that we set up. We will incorporate as many ideas we think are valid between the stakeholder group meetings as well as the, the questions and concerns we get into the document, and then we'll share it with the board again along the way. Meanwhile, the stakeholder groups will be working with me continuously throughout the, throughout the month. I mean, I, I hope the community recognizes that someone in my position has to be able to hear the voices of all the people who have concerns about what is really, really the biggest thing, biggest decision-making that's come across my desk in 28 years, because we're talking about the health and safety of children and adults, and their learning, their learning opportunities at the same time. You know, usually it's one or the other, now it's all together. So while I have to get all the input I can and make this a shared decision, I also have a job to do, and that's to manage a school district with many moving parts. So it's a balance. It's a balance between hearing all the voices I can hear and getting all the expertise I can get, but at the same time funneling it all, I have to manage it all and then make it work operationally. And, and look, we have a lot of people in our community who are very bright, very well-educated. So that's one reason why I may, I benefit from the, from the, from the people out there who have this expertise. However, it's a different thing when your boots on the ground, and you know what you can do, and you know what you can do. You know what, how many people you have to work with, you know how much money you have to work with, you know, the building. So I do hope the community recognizes that, that we work really hard at this, at stakeholder involvement despite what some people might think. There's just a limit to what we can do at some point. That's, I'll get off my soapbox, Monique.
I'd like, I'd like to ask the community who's listening in this call to please not chat to everyone. You'll get a chance to talk to everyone, and it's very difficult. It's two conversations going on at once. If you want to chat to each other, that's fine privately. You'll get the chance to communicate with us, ask questions, make comments, criticize. This took longer than it should have, and because of that, the implementation of the plan was delayed. It was, took too long, and there was literally no time to get it out in any time in advance other than hours in advance. So for any part I had in that, I apologize, but we need to move on. The plan can change and will change. It's not set in stone. We have all of August to work on it, and we can answer your questions. I'm seeing the questions come through chat. I can answer some of them. The board can answer, Dr. Taylor can answer, but it's difficult to have two conversations at once, so please.
Can I make a suggestion, Mark, that we, instead of doing board business and then go to public comment, that we do a public comment session now?
I was going to, I was going to ask the board for permission to do that.
Right. I just want to ask, I want, I want people to understand, no one's trying to make, not hear anyone's voice. That's no, not what's happening in this meeting, but just like if we were in a public board meeting right now, we, the board can't conduct a meeting if everyone is shouting from the audience, and that's the, in essence, what's happening in the chat. So we want to hear your voices, but it can't be in this disparate, everybody just shouting questions all at the same time. That's not productive, and it's just kind of working the chat up into a frenzy. So if we take a pause now, we take people's questions, then we can get those out there. And again, I hear people's frustration that we're talking about something that you haven't seen. That's not standard practice. Typically, we release the stuff that's on an agenda, so we've kind of, I see how this has been created and fomented. I totally get it, and I feel your frustration. So I'm with you, Mark. Open it up for public comment now so we can hear people, and then we'll go on with board business.
And I am not trying, I am not trying to scold or shut down anyone. I simply want to do this in a public manner as a public meeting should operate. And so let's go to public, let's go to, let's skip to public comment. I will read the motion, and then please raise your hand. I see all the hands are raised. Oh, and I'm going to start from the top and just call, call on people.
Oh, wait, Mark. Mark, first of all, we need to, we need, don't we need to add a public comment to the agenda, and then we have to agree to that? That's number one. But number two, I think it would be helpful, actually, if you scan down before you take questions from the public, if you kind of scan through the, the chat questions, which I actually think have been pretty helpful, even though maybe they don't feel good, I don't mind them. If we scan through those, many of those are going to be repeat questions or comments, and it might be helpful to kind of try to give a few of those answers before we actually, you know, ask people to speak.
Well, we do have, thank you, thank you, Rob. We do have public comment later in the meeting, so.
Oh, I know.
I'm only asking that we move public comment before the, I'm asking that the board agree to move number 10 to before number nine.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay, second.
Full in favor?
We need a roll call. We need a roll call.
We need a roll call, Linda?
It's unanimous.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to read the public comment section, and then Scott, I'd like you to go through them. You offered to answer the questions, the substantive questions. Could you go through the chat and answer questions, please?
I'm sorry, can I just suggest that we have the people that asked questions do that because it, don't we need to put their names and addresses into the public record? Don't we still do that procedure?
Their names are in, on their questions.
But not their addresses.
But not their addresses. So I think it'd be, it'd be more orderly and organized if we just do it the way that we always do it, and have people that have the questions on the chat just come forward and read their questions.
Then what I'll do is I'll start with questions which are specific questions about the plan and call on those people. Let me read this in first, though, please. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation as reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public. So let me scroll down. So I have a question here from everyone.
No, Mark, you were saying not to do that, to just ask people to give their questions, raise hands and do the questions.
I mean, yeah, it seems like everybody disagrees with me, and that's fine. So why don't we just go and let people speak?
Andrew, Scott, could you unmute? Andrew, um, Scott, could you unmute, please, Andrew Zappo? Hands is up.
Uh, Andrew, actually, you have the right, there you go, go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, hi, good evening, um, folks, welcome, uh, thank you for your service, first of all, um.
Your, your address, please, Andrew?
It's 131 Johnson Street, Highland Park, um, so I, I just want to comment that we're entering a very interesting time in this district, you know, and it's, everyone's dealing with this, and when you deal with a disorganized process and people have fear, you're going to create situations where their fear is going to create bigger problems, and you're going to start seeing that in comments and so forth throughout the chat. So be sensitive to that, because they're just reacting to what they're seeing on screen, which I've only been present for about 20 minutes, because I was late to the meeting, but it seems like there's kind of a feeling that the plan that exists isn't quite 100% of plan. One thing that you said, Scott, and I have to be very set, I think there's a very sensitive issue, is that when you make a comment about boots on the ground, boots on the ground is a nice way to talk about things where you were having an operation and people are involved, and they just have to get the mission done. Being a former serviceman, you know, I took an oath, and I did everything that I was supposed to do and volunteered to take part in whatever things the government sent to me, and you have that responsibility to try and do that for the district. The parents and their children didn't take an oath to have to deal with that, and it's almost really insensitive and kind of inappropriate, to use that term, in talking about something related to them being involved in something, we all have to deal with it, yes, but the risk that everyone is concerned about, they just want to see an organized process, and we know you're doing your best, and it's hard for everybody, just be patient and sensitive to the folks that need to speak, because they have something to say, and they all have their concerns, and it's important that you listen, because disorganization in any type of environment, you know, people can see it, and it creates fear, so just keep that in mind, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Allison Cassell Dunn, please. Could you unmute her? Um, oh, you did, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, thank you so much to everyone who has worked together, collaborated on this plan, I.
Your address, please.
Uh, 202 Lawrence Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, and as a teacher myself, not within the district, but elsewhere, I understand the incredible tasks that you all have taken on in trying to plan for something that we don't know what it's going to be like a week from now. Um, I would like, however, to address um, two things, one, I did not hear anything, and, and I'm not privy to this information about whether or not um, you have been working directly with the Highland Park Teachers Union um, in this plan, and secondly, I would like to suggest that feedback be a little bit more streamlined, I feel that a lot of the questions that are coming up in the chat are because people feel like their emails are going to be lost. Um, and I'm curious as to whether or not you have designed another type of method to collect feedback, whether through a Google form, as some of your um, schools have done before, in order to get concerns that are specific to Irving Bartle, the middle school and the high school, because chances are, your concerns for parents dropping off your children at Irving might be very different for your concerns that parents of high schoolers um, might have. So I am, would like to suggest that the feedback on the plan be a little bit more specific to grade level and to school, so that um, the administrators within those schools could maybe be a little bit, I guess, more proactive in anticipating the concerns that they have for those specific grade levels.
Allison, did you have a, was it a question you were asking about union collabora-
I was question, yes, I was asking about um, union collaboration, and then I was also asking about whether or not you had um, anticipating collecting feedback for particular schools, specifically not just to one email address, but to issues that may pertain to kindergartners versus 12th graders, they are going to be much different issues in regard to parent concerns.
Okay, well, first of all, yes, um, I've been working with Keith Presti, the president of the union, almost daily, often on the phone, he and I think eight of his leaders, executive leadership are on the, one of the two stakeholder groups, so they've been integral in actually developing the plan from the ground up. I will certainly be talking with the board, specifically Mark Creaker, at the end of this meeting about ways that we can obtain additional feedback outside of the email, I'll be very frank with the community, I um, I felt that the stakeholder process was very genuine, but I can see I underestimated the need to get an even wider perspective, and I, and I need to think very hard about the things I read in the chat screen, and, and what I'm hearing from Allison Yu and, and others about how in the next week or so, we can take this up to a whole nother level, um, so, so that we can make even more improvements of the plan with more people in giving us input, again, though, in a managed way, in a managed way. But you're muted, Allison, so I assume that.
Yeah, um, thank you, no, that, that addresses, I would encourage you to seek specific input from each school, I think that that would be um, not only helpful for us as parents to know that our direct administrators are getting our feedback, um, perhaps through something like a Google form, um, or an email address for each school.
That's an excellent idea, thank you, really an excellent idea.
Thank you very much, and that, that's, thank you, answered my question about the union as well.
Thank you very much.
Honestly, from the bottom of my heart as a parent, I really, and an educator, I very much appreciate everything you are doing.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, I see Ariel.
Yes, please, please unmute Ariel.
Uh, hi, thanks, um, my address is 213 South 10.
Can I get your last name, please?
Fagan, F-A-G-A-N. Um, I was curious about um, two things, first of all, preschool, um, I know it's not as, you know, it's not necess, you know, the preschool classes are half-day, so how is that going to work? Um, and special ed.
So, Ariel, it's our intention to bring pre-K and a significant number of special needs students back if they choose to go in-person, um, for four, four days instead of the two-day model, but that depends on the IED. Regarding the half-day of pre-K, I'm having Ms. McNally work on that, and if you'd like our, rather than you emailing or providing us input on whatever next step we're going to take for input, um, I'll have her reach out to you. What, what was your last name again, Ariel?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Linda has it.
Fagan.
Yeah, from Linda.
Okay, Scott, next, Sean O'Connell, please.
Hi, how's it going, uh, 234 Carcy Street? Did you get that, 234?
Yes, yeah, we have it.
All right, perfect, all right, so um, my question, and this is in reference to a point that Dr. Taylor made about um, the spring remote learning, uh, he heard uh, some dissatisfaction from that experience, and his solution, I believe, was certain amounts of PD, um, which will improve, because this, this will actually be big in the decision-making factor of whether I send, I mean, three different kids, three different schools, but uh, it'll be big into the decision factor of whether they go in-person, whether they go remote, will be the quality of education, um, remote education, I mean, I want to keep them as safe as possible, but uh, it was not the same experience uh, in the spring. The concern that I have, though, is that, did I hear that the PDs will all be optional? And how do we find out uh, who has taken it, whether or not anyone has taken it, stuff like that, uh, I guess would be my question.
Thank you.
That's a good question, but first let me step back to what we learned from the spring experience, it was clear, Sean, that um, not offering continuous synchronous instruction, live interactive instruction, um, was uh, was not helpful, and so that is something which we are planning to do, which uh, which will certainly be a step in the right direction, so that's one thing off the bat, you know, the interaction will be live, it'll be continuous, it'll be for a good portion of the day, um, and we'll be holding students accountable for, for uh, having the, uh, have attendance be taken. Now, in terms of PD, teachers, teachers receive professional development in May and June. As we were coming out of the spring and learning in April, what we needed to do to improve, um, we greatly enhanced our professional development academy, Nicole Krupsky, who's not with us, I was helping here earlier, was in charge of doing that. Uh, a lot of that professional development back in the spring was um, conducted by our own faculty, who we knew were doing a really great job engaging our kids and being effective in the virtual environment, they were sharing their best practices. Contractually, speed up to the summer, contractually, I'm, I'm sure you, you know that teachers work from September to June, um, and anything they do on their own, and, and many have, by the way, I mean, the professional development has been ongoing through the summer, first of all, a number of our teachers participated in Stanford University Virtual Learning Professional Development Series, I just got an email today from one of our special ed teachers here at Bartle, who's telling me about a group that she worked with here, that was engaged in the Graduate School of Education at York University PD, so a lot of that's been happening outside the district, but the district that will, the PD will be providing for the three weeks in, in August, leading into September, that, that will be voluntary on their part. Um, I, I don't know how I would tell you or get back to you about which teachers participated in that PD, and frankly, I'm, um, I have to, you know, look at the regs on what we could share with you, what we couldn't.
I'm sure you couldn't share anything more than a percentage or something like that, I'm sure you couldn't name names, but uh, but yes, that's what I was looking for.
Answer to that question, Sean, I mean, it's something which I'm actually now curious about, I've never been asked that question, so it's something I'll look into. Um, if you, would you like me to follow up with you?
Sure, thanks.
Why wouldn't teachers be able to participate in whatever the PD was remotely? Why would it either be a, you're in person or you don't?
Uh, in August?
Yeah.
Well, they, they're more than welcome to participate, but uh, we can't direct them to do that unless we compensate them.
No, no, the question was, are they able to participate remotely, or does it have to be in person?
Absolutely, absolutely, if I misinterpreted your question, forgive me, Sean.
Oh, no, that was just Darcy's point.
No, absolutely.
I think, yes, the answer is yes, they can participate in the PD remotely, right?
Uh, yes.
Wait, can we be 100% clear here, are we asking teachers to participate in additional PD that we're not compensating them for?
I'm, I'm making that opportunity available to them, Darcy, yes.
Yeah, I, I did not understand that at all, I thought that that was.
Nor did I.
Part of, part of their paid PD.
I think you're hearing that, that doesn't make sense to a lot of people.
Scott, what, what was, what was your answer, that, that you're making available unpaid PD, or you're making available paid extra PD for, for the staff?
Uh, I, I'm making professional development available for our staff, they don't have to pay for the workshops, as if they would like to do workshops in August remotely, they can, I can't require them to do so unless I compensate them.
I think you should put a budget together for compensating them, Scott.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like there's any other profession that I know of that would require this kind of PD that is, I mean, if we're not requiring it.
Even if it's not required, Michelle.
Even if it's not required, we need to pay them, I didn't realize this, we need to.
Right, but I was just making the point that especially since we're talking about this very important, um, you know, new change, I would not have thought that it was voluntary and unpaid, I mean, that was my assumption.
We never have any money, we never have any money, why should this time be different? Let's pay them, whether we have the money or not, let's pay the teachers, please.
I get a wish.
Good. Want to continue, Mark?
I, I wanted to just make two very quick points, one is, um, we will be doing busing when we are in-person, and I do want to say that the governor changed the indoor requirements for the state today, and what might be next, and there is a bill in the assembly now to, to delay school, and I want to also say that in the plan, we've put words in that based, um, working with myself and Chris Woodward and some of his contacts, let us say, uh, in, in the field, uh, to use various statistics on the, on, on, in the, in the county and adjacent counties to delay further if we have to. We're not, this is not about putting people's lives at risk, and I certainly don't want to be the person to put anybody's life at risk, so if we find that the retransmission rate goes up substantially, we may choose to delay, to delay in-person school even more, that's, that's one of the unknowns that we said the plan is changing, it is 100% done, it's just changing underfoot every day, and that's one of the changes we may have to make, and last time the governor was at least 10 days late, um, I don't want to be part of that 10 days late, if it comes to it, you know, as the beaches have opened and people aren't wearing masks, so I'll get off my soapbox now.
Right, but the biggest, the biggest thing that we can do now is to be prepared for potentially all remote learning.
Yes.
And be, and be ready to hit the ground running 100%.
Yes.
So whatever, whatever it takes for us to get to that point, that's what we need to do.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate the board's support.
So, Chris, Chris, one, can we unmute, Chris, you can unmute yourself, please.
Uh, are, are you calling on me?
Yes, please.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Taylor, I, I was just going to ask about the possibility of professional development, uh, once the actual year has started, I mean, the, the school days are going to be four hours long, is that, is that right?
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Chris, and I alluded to that on one of my slides, um, we'd like to have at least an hour each day, uh, for five days dedicated to professional development, so not only would teachers participate in workshops, but they would also get into their grade level teams, uh, or the departments at the upper grades, and, and share what's been working, what hasn't been working, so um, you know, I, I don't want anybody to think that because we would only be instructing for four days, that's it, so all the teachers are doing, after we give them their contractual prep time and lunchtime, the rest is for professional development.
Okay, so um, next, next on the list of hands was Rob Scott, could you, could you unmute him, please?
Bob, I'll lower your hand.
Uh, I guess I don't know exactly where to start.
Address, address, please, Rob.
That's the place to start.
Address, please, tonight.
My name is Rob Scott, 25 South Second Avenue.
Thank you.
Apartment one.
Thank you.
Uh, I served on the, or serve on the parent input committee, we saw the plan last Monday, uh, last Monday, we had a meeting on Tuesday, and there was a meeting on Thursday, uh, so the six of us, uh, who were parents on that committee, did send a, a statement on, on four issues that we thought were particularly critical to the board, um, and I know they received that, and I just wanted to say, uh, Dr. Taylor thanked four of us, but Sonia Hedlam and Matt Hirsch were also um, really involved in that, I mean, we met on our own for a long two-hour Zoom, um, and uh, I think we had lots of questions, and we could not agree on everything, but those things that we sent were things that we could all agree on, and number one sort of magnifies what Rob Magaziner just said, is that we really need to be prepared to be 100% remote, and since the district survey said that something like 38% uh, of parents had indicated that they would send their kids remote, it's absolutely critical that remote instruction be of the highest quality. it's absolutely critical that remote instruction be of the highest quality. And there's been a letter circulated by Jen Voorhees and Jen Altman that many, many parents have signed emphasizing the importance that instruction be led by teachers. We also pointed out, and I think this was something we could all agree on, is that the situations in the elementary and the secondary schools were very different and require different strategies. And it seems like some of that is being adopted by the plan. But the details really, really, you know, are thin. We also, this issue of professional development felt very strongly that really all the teachers need to be offered the same choice that students are being offered. Students are being offered the choice to be 100% remote. And the reason they're being offered that is to protect their health and the health of people who are at risk who they may live with at home. And I think, we think that the teachers need to be offered that same choice. And it needs to be a choice that they can take without any fear of reprisal. I know they were surveyed, but it wasn't an anonymous survey. And they need professional development. The two versions of the plan that I read, and despite asking the question multiple times, it was never clear if teachers were actually going to be offered more professional development, more paid professional development. And now it seems clear that maybe that wasn't the plan. We really need that. The teachers need that. The teachers can't do a good job turning on a dime to do something when they've trained years and years to teach in person, to turn on a dime and teach remote. And that really, really needs to happen. And I'm glad Mark Krieger said, we got to find the money. I mean, I think that's the attitude we need to have. Another point that we all agreed on was the endpoint of continuing, even if it's hard, to pursue testing for as many members, students at school, teachers, members of the community as possible. And we would encourage the board and the superintendent reach out to Middlesex County directly, because Middlesex County already offers free testing. If that could be facilitated in the parking lot near Bartle in the week before school for anyone who wanted it, that would be a very good thing for the schools and the community. I just wanted to say, just in general about the plan, I really, really hope people ask questions, lots of questions. This process was not great. I mean, I wandered around feeling guilty in that, well, I get to see a version of the plan, but my neighbors don't. And how will my neighbors be able to comment on the plan at the board meeting when they're going to vote on it when they haven't seen it? Well, I've seen it. I have my opinions. And we were in a really awkward position, and this is one of the things that came up in our meeting. And Sonia Hedlam made this point, and it was very, very well taken. She said, you know, we all need to step outside of ourselves. We know about our own kids and about our own situations, but we don't know about the rest of the community. And the only way you know about the rest of the community is if you ask them. And the only way that they can ask questions, that anyone can ask questions, is to see the plan. So it would have been better to have released the plan before the meeting and before the board votes. People need to ask questions because there are things that in the versions of the plan I saw were not clear. Somebody, a teacher, asked a question, will Zoom be available to the district to conduct remote classes? That's not been answered as near as I can tell. Will the district have a Zoom license? I don't know. And with that, I'm just going to shut up. And I just, I really encourage anyone else here, please, please ask questions.
Rob, thank you. And I do want to answer two of your questions. We do have Zoom licenses. They are paid for. And we have, we had, we have 154 people in this meeting. That's a paid-for Zoom license. Teachers will get licenses to use it. And you asked the questions about teachers working virtually or remotely, whatever you call it, and not needing what I'm going to call an excuse. Dr. Taylor has been working with our union president to determine the use of the NJEA standard for teachers not coming into school in person. And that has, I'm going to say, virtually no very low requirement, almost no requirement. And that means that teachers who choose to not teach in person can be safe. And if they weren't, the board would insist, if we weren't doing that, the board would insist on that. Safety is first. We can't have people sick. We can't have people dying. So it's very important to us.
Mark, I can also follow up with Rob about the issue of testing. Rob, it was your idea at one of the meetings. I reached out to the Borough, and I did. And I've gotten good feedback from Borough officials. What we're looking into now is actually looking, is working with the freeholders, county freeholders. We had a conversation with one of the freeholders. There's a possibility we could actually get something going through a local business to provide some kind of a testing site right here in town. Our backup plan would be to work with some of the other local businesses that we've identified. And I don't feel comfortable sharing the names of those businesses, but I am reading from a note here to see if they could also partner with local pharmaceuticals and whatnot to provide testing. So we're actively looking into it.
Thank you, Scott. Andrea Alexander has her hand up.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. This is Andrea Alexander. I'm at 116 North Third Avenue. You know, I'm thrilled to hear about testing. I'm thrilled to hear what you just said. I think that's such an important part about bringing the kids, bringing everybody back safely. And I just hope that it's a testing program that tests teachers as well as students when possible, that's open to families, so they can get tested. I think that'll make a lot of people feel a lot better about going back to school because I know there's so much anxiety. So I just had a couple of quick things. I just want to make sure that I heard correctly really at the beginning. So are all Irving students getting tablets, or is it only students?
No, all Irving students will get tablets, and we'll be sure all of our Bartle kids have Chromebooks.
Okay, great. All right. And so I had a question that actually didn't come up in our meetings, and it was about the physical buildings. I think you mentioned something about windows. I don't know if it was at Irving, but like what's being done physically to prepare the buildings? And I was, you know, I've had conversations, there are a lot of questions about classrooms where windows don't open. And there are a lot of articles now about how ventilation is important. Ventilation is key. So I was just wondering, like, what's been done physically to get the buildings ready? Especially, I guess, in Irving and Bartle, the kids will come back first and to make sure that there's fresh air in the classrooms.
Good question, Andrea. So we will have by the end of the month all of our windows operational district-wise that they can open. Now, some rooms, I think at the middle school, we've got a couple in particular I know I can think of that had bay windows that can't open, we'll be relocating those classes so that every teacher will be able to open a window.
All right, great. And then my other question is aftercare. I mean, I'm thrilled that it's going to be an option. On one level, I'm thrilled that's going to be an option. But I was just wondering how it's going to work, like, are the children going to be kept in their same groups that they are in the classroom? I'm just, you know, curious about how aftercare can be done safely.
I can't answer that question. That's still working those details out with the coordinators. And I don't want to entertain any ideas yet, so, but as soon as we conclude how we're going to operate the aftercare program, obviously you'll get information about that. But I can assure you that we're going to run a before and aftercare program.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the students at Irving will get tablets, every student?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Andrea, let me make something clear. We're going to be applying most, if not all, the same health protocols we have, we'll be applying during the day to our before and aftercare programs. That's going to be priority number one.
Right.
All right, temperature testing, you know, and all that, spacing, of course, seven feet spacing, mask wearing or face covering wearing.
Right. I know there's a concern, though, about, you know, exposing the number, I guess, the number of people you're exposing, anybody, your child, you, yourself, too, or whatever. So that's why if it's possible to try to keep these kids together and the groups are in during the school day, I think it would be so much safer and make people feel confident about signing up for aftercare and keeping their kids in longer.
And we are, as you'll see when you read the plan, we are going to be grouping siblings who go to different schools in the district together in the same cohort that come in person so that we can manage, accommodate parents and guardians and their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, I'd like you to talk, please, since you're on the board, next.
Thank you. I just really, it seems silly to say this, but keeping in line with changing our language so that we are updated, freeholders don't exist anymore. They are not called freeholders in the state of New Jersey any longer. They're now commissioners. Freeholders is a racist title, and it was done away with and just signed into law July 31st.
Right. So I do, before we call on anyone else, I do want to clear up a couple of things. Virtual means remote. We are doing busing. We're planning to do busing. The protocols for busing will be the protocols that are right from the state guidelines on the bus companies doing all of the things that the schools are supposed to do. Meaning, temperature checks, face coverings, social distancing. And Scott, I did want to ask you a question. If there are two students in the same family and they're in the same school, or in one in middle school, one in high school, I don't know this, but are the students going to be put into the same cohort?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So Tracy is next. Could you call on Tracy, please?
Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I live at 247B South East Avenue. And I just, I wanted to just say that my kids had a fantastic remote learning experience. And their teachers did an amazing job. They were super supportive. But I have some concerns because I think one of the things that their teachers did really, really well was they did not try to replicate a school day. And I hear a lot of talks several times, Dr. Taylor has mentioned replicating a school day for remote learning. And that's not really possible. And four hours, I mean, I've sat through two-hour Zoom meetings and they're exhausting. So four hours of synchronous learning. I get that parents are concerned, and I feel terrible that other children didn't have the same sort of experience that my kids had, which was great. Many tools of learning used. There was a lot of diversity. There was teacher interaction. But there was also the ability to work on their own. It was, a lot of it was asynchronous. And you could just, you know, conference in with the teacher if you needed during the day. So I'm just, I feel like it's a missed opportunity. I feel like we're, by trying to replicate the school day, we're sort of it's doing a disservice to everyone. I understand that people didn't have a good experience, but are we swinging too far, the pendulum too far in the opposite direction now? By just saying, okay, let's replicate the school day by putting everybody on Zoom for four hours a day and having synchronous learning so they get lots and lots of teacher face time? When really, that's not the same as what happens in school.
Okay.
And that's exactly what I was just saying. So thank you, Tracy, for, you know, expressing it so much more clear. That's exactly what I was getting at.
And my understanding of the plan is not that we will replicate the school day. For one thing, we can't replicate the school day in four hours. And so what I have heard and discussed has been much shorter and focused differently. I'm not a curriculum expert. That's not my strength. But what I've heard is classes being taught differently and much shorter classes, but focused more so that the students take away more. And Scott, could you add more to that, please?
Yes, but Christina, my vision isn't that necessarily kids have less time on task as much as we dive more deep into concepts and not feel pressured to cover the entire curriculum. So more depth, less breadth. So that could mean, for instance, one scenario which we are still not 100% positive we're going to be able to run would be to have those two days for in-person, I'm sorry, the four days for remote, not run a full eight-period schedule every day, but rather split up the periods so that maybe kids would have four, you know, half their classes on Monday, half their classes on Tuesday, again, half on Wednesday, and again, half on Thursday. The idea being that they don't have to worry about getting to all four core content subjects and their specials and their electives all in one day.
Okay, why don't we then, oh, Rob, Rob Ruslowich, you had a question. You had your hand up.
Yeah, one of the questions I had going through the plan, and I think it might come up later on as some people look at this plan, will each of the four schools operate autonomously? Or will there be shared staff and teachers between the four schools?
That's a great.
I know we want to keep the.
No, Rob, that's a great question. Once we get the decision-making form feedback from teachers, we'll know if we need to share staff, particularly at the elementary grades where we have certifications that cover, you know, K-5. There might be some instances at the upper grades, when I have a certified science teacher who happens to be home, who will be teaching from home, who's also certified to teach high school students who'll be home. So there could be some shared staff. We're going in assuming we can keep our staff in building. But in terms of the virtual instruction teachers, they may have to go cross schools. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. So Jason, Jason was next here, Scott.
Hi, this is actually Rebecca Estelle. Jason's my husband, my computer.
I'm also here. We're 606 Abbott.
6th Abbott Street. So we have two.
Wait, 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 can I get your last name again? I'm sorry.
My last name is Estelle, E-S-T-E-L-L-E, first name Rebecca.
And that was, what street again? Abbott?
Abbott.
Thank you.
Okay, so my questions are all sort of interrelated. But I just wanted a sense of how long this plan is in effect for in terms of, you know, opting out of in-person instruction. It's one thing to opt out of in-person instruction for, say, you know, the first half of the school year. But opting out indefinitely is obviously something a little bit different. So we wanted to know, you know, sort of, is there a plan for revisiting that choice? And also, in particular, you mentioned that there's a possibility of expanding the number of days in school. And certainly with a significant change like that, that might be something that makes it more or less appealing to people for a variety of reasons. So I'm wondering what kind of flexibility there could potentially be there. Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, the Governor, the Department of Education is requiring districts to incorporate in their plan, which we did as well, some language that allows a parent guardian to transition a child in or out of virtual in-person. So we have a transition plan we'll put in place. And actually, our board policy that Mark is probably wanting to talk about thoroughly speaks to that.
So we got model policies from our policy organization and also from the NJSBA, the New Jersey School Boards Association. And they both point at the decision-making being on a semester-by-semester basis. And that really rubbed me the wrong way. It just seems ridiculous. You can't make a change for half a year. So I've changed it, at least tentatively, and asked the board for their thoughts. But also, we are voting on that for first reading tonight, but second reading is at the end of the month. And it now stands that the going out, going in, back and forth, and so on, will be available to parents on a, I'm calling it a half semester basis. So that amounts to probably every two months you can make a choice to change.
Okay, great. And then my second question was, for those of us who might have options, and it might be sort of a close call either way, we're considering such factors as, you know, what's going on with the rest of the community. And we're worried about what's going on for people who don't have the same kind of options. And I'm wondering if it's, and this is not my area of expertise, so I'm wondering if this is reasonable to say, to think, well, maybe opting out since we can is helpful to other people, you know, having more space essentially, like fewer kids, lessening the spread, to the extent you can opt out, maybe you should.
There was some, that's a great question, and I appreciate you asking. There were a number of people on, among the 60 stakeholders who helped with the plan, who threw out the idea of us including some language that encourages families, parents and guardians who are on the fence or even would like to bring their kids back in person, be willing to keep them home if it means they can allow another family to bring that person back. I didn't end up incorporating language about that, but it's certainly something that we're receptive to. I mean, if a parent or guardian is on the fence, it would be helpful for our in-person numbers if that parent guardian kept the child home. That's, of course, with the assurance that virtual instruction is going to be highly effective. So like, for instance, in the case of Irving, if I'm going to bring back all of my Irving as one group, not split them in cohorts, so I can get them all in for at least four days of in-person instruction, I'm going to need my numbers to be down. You know, right now my class sizes might hover between like, you know, 15, 20 depending on the grade. I need to get those numbers down to like 10. You know, in order to make that happen. So look, as Rob Scott pointed out earlier, a survey data was showing a little more than a third of our families initially interested in remote learning. So that number sticks. We should be in good shape, but it would always help if you're on the fence to, to go the, opt away virtual.
Okay, so next speaker is Tara.
Hey Tara, oh yeah, there you go.
Okay, Tara Canavera, 361C Crowells Road, Highland Park, New Jersey. I understand after three weeks, are you definitely going to bring the middle school and high school kids back or is that still not determined is my first question.
So the board reserves the right to do, to further delay based on conditions in the county, city in Highland Park and in the county and in the state, in the adjacent counties in the state.
Okay. And my other question is you had mentioned that for certain students, special ed, there may be an option for them to go for the four days in person. Is that for all grades or just the younger kids or will that include the middle school and high school children?
Well, which, wait, so in terms of general education students, we're looking at keeping the cohorts model at the middle high school, but fighting to, to, to bring all the kids back at Irving regarding the special needs population. That's going to be IEP dependent and also program dependent. So we have some small class groups that we would likely bring in for four days. Those are generally our higher needs students. Does that make sense, Tara?
It does, but it doesn't help my son who's not higher needs. So, but it does help other kids. So that's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara, for your testimony.
Let me just point out that the problem with the middle high school, you know, bringing that back, back all the kids on mass, I mean, it's multi-fold. One, one problem is our class numbers are much bigger up there. So it's going to be more challenging to try to cut the numbers down to a safe place. And the other issue of course is how to accommodate the change of classes. Right now, the hybrid model as written in the plan, you would have the kids staying where they are and then the teachers moving from class to class, but but, but that could be an issue the more, if we even have more kids than we anticipate coming in person. That's why it's more challenging at the upper grades to, to keep them whole. And four days.
No, I understand it's better to keep them home, but you know, a lot of kids struggled. My son struggled and he was crying and begging me and my husband not to opt him out if that was an option. So. I mean, I appreciate all you're doing and I feel you guys are doing a great job to keep us safe and I do appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tara. So Andrea, please, Scott.
Yep. Go ahead, Andrea. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes, Andrea Hetling Werny. I'm at 29 South Fourth Avenue. So one of the previous questions by a guardian answered my question about the half semester choice of enrolling. But I, another quick question, and I really appreciate the time of the board and you, Dr. Taylor, and all of the parents and guardians on the line. So I'll try to be brief so everyone can ask questions. You implied that students from the same family would be assigned to the same cohort. And I am wondering to the extent that, that the process can allow for more choice as the mom of a fourth grader and an 11th grader, I may choose, I may prefer to choose one to stay at home and one to go. I really don't know yet. I'm also imagining for families for whom tech might be an issue or larger households or multi-generational households, perhaps they don't want their child in assigned to the same cohort. So to the extent that we can embed choice in the decision that we're making or parents are asked to make by August 11th, that would be really helpful.
Yeah. So if I heard the question correctly, you appears and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrea, you would, you would, you might have different ideas for each of the children with like the option of, of, of opting for different learning models. That can be done. If that's the question, the answer is yes. Hold on, I'm just going to mute Tara. Go ahead. Is that where you're going, Andrea?
That's part A of the question. Part B is if parents opt to have more than one child attend a hybrid model, can they opt out of being assigned to the same cohort?
Yes. In other words, can we change the schedule so there's parallel? If, if there's a change in, in learning environment, the answer is yes. And we, we would, we would change the schedule to accommodate that, that pairing. Helped by answered the question correctly.
Um, I, I think so.
I did, by the way, Andrea and others, I did put words into that. Or I did change the words in the policies that we got from the New Jersey School Boards Association, rego opting in and opting out on remote learning, which we're going to do for first reading tonight. That allow exceptions on a case by case basis by the principal. So that while in principle, there's a two month perhaps window to apply to the other type of learning. And I realize, by the way, this plan might not be in place so quickly depending on when and whether schools open. But at some point we're going to do this. So when we do it, there'll be the opportunity of the principal to let someone who's decided a little bit too late or who has special needs or whatever reason to bring their child back to the other mode of, of learning. I just want everyone to know that. So Scott, could you, I'm actually, Rob Scott, I'm going to pass, pass, let the other folks who haven't spoken yet speak. The Hirsch family was next in line after Rob. And then Rob, I'll get you after the next couple.
Hi, I'm Christine Hirsch, 333 Felton Avenue, Highland Park.
Time out, time out. Can you speak up? You're a little soft on the other end.
Sure, I'll get closer here. Okay, perfect. 333 Felton Avenue. Highland Park, New Jersey. I'm just curious as to the workload for this, the teachers, are they going, are you going to designate that teachers are simply a remote teacher or simply an in-house in like instructor? Or are they going to have to combine the workflow of teaching remote children as well as the students that they physically?
It's our vision and this depends, of course, on the input we get in next, in the next week to pair up. The teachers will be remote only with the students will be remote only. The, the second survey data shows that, that the, the numbers could match up. That we might have the nice pairing. Of course, we're going to have to customize some of that, that pairing depending on certification needs at the upper grades. But that's the focus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. iPhone, could you identify yourself?
Is that me?
Yes, it's you.
Okay, sorry. I don't know how to put my name on there. My name is Fanya Maria Takalakos. I'm at 427 Magnolia Street.
Could you spell your last name, please? I didn't really get it. Lyndon needs it for the record.
Sure, no problem. He hasn't talked.
Ways away, but I'll let you know.
Wait, wait, we, we've lost you.
Do you hear me?
Now we do. Go ahead.
Okay, so it's T S A K A L A K O S.
Thank you.
So this kind of has to do also a little bit with the previous question that Christine gave. If, if there's let's say an outbreak in one of the cohorts and someone is in the hybrid form, do they then as they're, let's say they're not really sick, but they let's say get tested with COVID, do they go into the four day model until they get better? Like, do they go with another teacher? Are we, are they with the same teacher? And, and that kind of concerns me with the two days of the, of the hybrid model. Are they, those two days in which they are virtually learning? Are they in the same style as the other people that are in the four day virtually learning? Or is it slightly different because they're in a hybrid model? Because it's like, I'm trying to decide what's like the better option. So I was just curious if it's going to be streamlined and who the teacher is, if it's a different teacher.
Yeah. So, so initially we think we would, and I'm sorry, I don't have 100% confident answer to give you because it's still, it's one of the details we're working on in the next couple of weeks. But our initial vision is to then have the student who's quarantined placed with a virtual or remote only, virtual only teacher, which would mean that teacher in a sense becomes like a home instructor for the student. So the schedule, which that's what might be adapted. So for instance, if your child all of a sudden has to go home for two weeks, let's say it's not something more than a visit to a, a state on the restricted list. We would pair up a remote only teacher with your child and arrange for essentially like a home instruction model. The likelihood is if we have a child on quarantine and it's not something like visiting a state on the restricted list, we, we likely will have had a problem more systemically that could prompt us to close. I mean, and then that's, that's one of the conundrums. I mean, how are we going to be working with kids if we have a numbers of them all of a sudden who have to go home for, for quarantine? It's, it's likely that it could be, if it's not a visit to a state on a restrictive list, it could be contact with another person who's infected. God forbid, it could be somebody who's infected him or herself, theirself.
And so.
You asked a different question, which was the, the student who's hybrid, when they aren't in the class, they would be in synchronous learning with the same teacher.
Okay, they would be in synchronous learning with the same teacher.
That they have on the days they're in.
I missed.
And that's kind of what concerns me about the, like, if they're not getting the professional development, like if it's voluntary. And then ensuring the quality of the instruction in online becomes iffy for me. So like, how do we know that the teacher that we're getting has received that kind of instruction? Or is it going to be sort of a streamlined method of teaching the online? Or is it kind of up to the teacher? I'm just curious about that a little bit as well. Sorry, that's a double question.
That's a great point. And let me circle back to that because PD has been obviously a concern. First of all, I got to remind everybody that we did require teachers to engage in professional development in the spring. Wasn't optional. They were required to about virtual instruction. So this professional development work began in April, May. Now I take full responsibility for not incorporating the guidelines that we're going to see in the fall, like requiring teachers to teach synchronously live for four days. I purposely didn't go in that direction. I have my reasons. But now I'm going in that direction in the fall. So teachers will have an opportunity to take what they learned in the spring and apply it come fall. Second, of course, the outcome of this meeting might very well be that we're going to compensate teachers to engage in professional development this summer. But I also must point out that we have two full days of professional development still planned for September 2nd and 3rd. And the vast majority of the agenda for both of those meetings has to do with virtual instruction. So it's yet another layer of PD support.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your question. Melissa Qual.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm at 218 Harrison Avenue. And I wanted to thank everybody again for all your hard work. I really do appreciate it. The question I have is similar to the previous caller. But what happens if the teacher gets sick?
So there obviously the teacher goes home. According to the calculations we placed in our health protection policy, we may have to obviously would contact all those who had contact with the teacher. We would consider closing either a part of the school, the school, or perhaps the entire school district. In terms of instruction, we would, and I'm, and this is not something that we've written as a plan. So I do appreciate you bringing it up, but the, the likelihood is we would either hire a substitute or if a substitute is not available, compensate existing teachers to pick up the class loads, similar to what we do now when we, when we're in a tough spot. You know, we've had teachers from time to time take a sudden emergency leave too quickly for us to turn over the position. So we've worked within to have various pitch in and, and we compensate them.
The teacher will be quarantined and any other people that are in contact with them will be. The plan has criteria which include if that school has a second classroom. So that in effect, that classroom or classrooms that are in person would be quarantined. But if we have a second classroom in that school where someone is ill or potentially ill, we close down the school. That is to say we go remote, virtual with that entire school. And then a third point is if we have other cases, any other cases in the district after we've had to do that, the whole district will go remote. And that, that's predicated on us even opening. You know, if we get to a point where it's bad enough, we, you know, in the, in the area, we won't, we won't open, we'll, we'll delay. So again, safety is our first priority. And we have pretty good criteria for doing those closings and doing those quarantining. So Steve Rubin and then, then Rob Scott, I promise you, you'll go next.
Steve?
Yeah. Hello, hello, Steve Rubin, 66 South Adelaide Avenue. I'm wondering if at the high school level, if all of the classes, including specifically AP and honors type classes will all still be included. And the second part to my question is to the remote kids I'm talking about. And the second part of the question is for a remote student, will they be participating live at the same time as the classes going on? So those are my two questions.
Okay, good questions. So first of all, yes, it's our intent to offer a full complement of classes like we would in a traditional in a traditional year for the kids will be all virtual. That includes the honors, AP. Second, the so this, right now, the virtual only students who participate in live interactive instruction with the teachers we assign them, likely the teachers will also be home for home, to work from home. Steve, I'm sorry, I follow, I tried to follow both your questions and I missed a part of it.
Well, the second part of that question that you were about to answer was if there is a class going on at the school, one of these, whatever class it is, will it be live to the student at home so that they can participate at the same time as the kids that are in the classroom being taught? Like live stream?
Right, live stream.
The answer is it might be.
Yeah.
Depending on the class and the teacher and so on. So if we have an AP teacher teaching, I don't know, AP chemistry and they are in an in-person environment, but we have students who are remote who want to take that. And again, the, you know, the implementation of this is up to Dr. Taylor and the, and the administration. The intent of the plan is for that student to be able to look in live on that class.
And that, and they'd be able to ask question, and I assume they'd be able to ask questions or whatever.
They would be able to bane of my existence through chats with the teacher.
I see. All right. Thank you. We look forward to reading the rest of the plan, but we appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank, thank you, Steve. And Rob, Rob Scott, please.
Well, now I have two questions because that last bit, that's not something I ever saw in the plan, this looking in live on the teachers. So you're telling me that a Highland Park teacher is going to be teaching in person in a mask.
Or a shield.
And there's going to be a video camera on them and they're going to try and manage the questions that my kid gives them remote from home. Who's watching as well? This doesn't seem like a very workable model and maybe needs to be reconsidered. But my other question is about the issue of teachers being able to opt into remote. I really would rather have that my kid who opts into remote have a teacher that is teaching him remote and that that's that teacher's responsibility. And I think we can allow the teachers to opt into that. And I don't think the NGA and asking teachers to take FMLA is the same thing. And I don't think the NGA and asking teachers to take FMLA is the same thing as giving teachers a choice. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is the remote teaching is work. It's hard work. Just as hard or harder than in person. And I think it would be very, very important to just straight up survey the, survey the teachers now, right? And say, do you want to teach remote or not? And use that in the plan. You're going to use the reentry form data from families to the same thing, to do the same thing. I think a genuine, free of retribution, free of you're going to be forced to take FMLA survey to the teachers is really important. If we're to be a community, well, that reflects the values that I think our community has.
And that survey will be administered tomorrow. Deadline will be August 11th. Okay, Mark.
I don't see any other hands up. Anyone else, please? Monique?
I was just trying to obviously give all of the public commenters an opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate all the comments. And I have to raise this concern that I raised at a board meeting of, maybe a couple of board meetings ago, just about the fact that now my concern is that we're going to find our most marginalized students being the ones sitting in class in person come September. And yes, I know we have created a robust plan in terms of following as many of the safety protocols as we can and that are available to us, but the risk is still going to be greater being in person. So I am really concerned about the fact that families, and now I understand that some families will choose in person for some of the reasons that have already been given, so I understand that. But there will be many families who will choose in person just because they have to, right? Parents feel like they don't have much of an option. And again, these are going to be our most marginalized students and families. And we have to really safeguard against this. We cannot allow this to happen where we end up having a racially and economically segregated district come September, where we have mostly kids of color, disabled students, low income families, the majority in school, and the rest of the students who are more privileged, have more flexibility or come from homes with more flexibility, are able to opt into remote learning. That cannot happen because we are, again, putting the most marginalized children at the greatest risk. No matter how much safety procedures we put into place, we cannot eliminate all the risks that people who are going to be going remote will face. And that includes the teachers. We already know in Highland Park where most of the COVID cases have occurred in our town. And that has been in the predominantly black, predominantly people, persons of color of this community. These are the populations that have been mostly impacted right here in Highland Park. Unfortunately, we don't have the hard racial data, which we should, we don't. But we know where most of the cases have occurred. So those are, again, as I said, those are our families, our, our children mostly that are going to be coming to schools. And we cannot, I will not like sit by and just say, okay, this is okay. It's one thing, I understand that families may want to kind of give space for families of students who need to be in school, but then let's think about what is that doing to a certain group of students that should be, should be able to have that same safety protocol, right, of just all remote? And how can we make sure this doesn't happen? So let's collect the, when we get these surveys from families, what's the demographic data? Look at it closely. If we start to see a real tilt in those numbers, we better figure out a way to address that. And I'm speaking strongly, and I'm not, because it's, it's something that I'm really concerned about. And I, we've already seen what has happened in Newark where I had family members who were in a summer program and they had to shut down because of a teacher getting sick. And so, and again, these are students putting, and teachers putting themselves on the line first, right? While others can sort of sit back and choose the safest option, which is actually remote.
Monique, I agree, and I, I would say that the board agrees. I know, I know the other board members, we agree. I think it behooves the administration to look at the data, share it with the board, share it with the community, and come up with some plans to make this not happen or make it happen that is fairness. So let's, let's do that, please. And Monique and Michelle, you, and, and Rob Magaziner as well, but the board, the whole board, people really have felt strongly about this. Let's put our energy into this. Let's, let's make something happen with this so that we're not in this position. So I hear you, and we all hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monique. Andrea, your hand is up again. Yes, please, please speak. Scott, just mute Andrea.
My, thank, thank you, everybody. I just, I wanted to thank Monique because I, I sort of raised that concern, and I was definitely concerned that it seems like, well, if you can afford to hire a nanny or somebody, you could stay home, and if you can't, you go to school. And I know there are a lot of parents, I'd say, at least in the lower grades, where we might feel slightly more confident that it's safe enough to send our kids to school, that are anxious to send our kids to school. You know, I'm an Irving parent, and, and I guess one way of sort of mitigating the possibility that it's just going to be your marginalized communities in the school is, is giving parents in a situation where they might feel safer to come back, a reason to come back. And that is, a reason to come back is not two half-days a week, but a reason to come back to school is four or five half-days a week. I think, I know people who say, oh, two half-days, why bother going to school? You might see sort of like a more demographically equal mix if, you know, I'm really speaking to the lower grades, if, you know, the, if the options for going to school are enough to make people think that it's worth it. So I, you know, I do think, and I've been asking you all along to make sure that, you know, it would be great to have an opportunity that if, you know, and I, and I know that this is all wishful thinking in some sense because we don't know what's going to be going on in September. I know I see the numbers and they're rising, and the governor could come around and shut everything down. But, you know, if we are in a position to open the schools, you know, I guess presenting a program that looks, that looks like it's worth going to school, I think is going to draw more people and, more people in who are, who are interested, but, you know, looking for something that's like, that's enough coverage and care to be part of it. And, and you know, the other thing, it's just one thing that didn't come up tonight was the, the outdoor learning piece of this. And I didn't know if Dr. Taylor could address it all, what's, like, what language is in the plan right now? And what, like, what's being considered? And I realize I'm saying this on this crazy rainy night, but in terms of like outdoor learning opportunities as a way of keeping our kids safe by not having them inside enclosed classrooms?
Andrea, in the plan, we talk about mapping out spaces for outdoor learning so that all the teachers can actually sign up and use a space. We're still looking into the possibility of purchasing tents, but we're not letting the tents dictate the possibility of outdoor learning. You know, it's just one way to shelter kids, but it's not, it's not a necessity as far as I'm concerned. Because the reality is, unless we get in closed tents, inclement weather would drive kids indoors. So there's some challenges to outdoor learning, but we've incorporated language about it and we're encouraging it. But there, there's still some challenges to that, Andrea. I mean, you know, if there is inclement weather, sudden inclement weather, it could prompt the class to have to move indoors. I can't just send kids home on the spot, you know, fly, which means I do need to have an indoor space for every teacher who might use an outdoor space. So that's just an example of one of the things that would, of course. I'm trying not to, you know, like, I think it was Michelle who said earlier, we have to, we have to think positively about the ability to change and think out of the box. And I, and I'm working at doing that as best I can. In this case, there are some challenges, but not to preclude us from doing the outdoor learning thing. And it's written in the plan.
What, what is the cafeteria and the gym going to be used for if we're having half-days? Are those going to be spaces that can be like flex spaces? If there's, you know, it's a rainy day, the outdoor learning class can be in the cafeteria that day?
It could, except the likelihood is we're going to be using all of our spaces to house students. So that, for instance, as one of our middle school teachers has pointed out, some classrooms don't have windows. I have a guidance office, no, not a guidance office. I have a basic skills class in Irving that doesn't, it's windowless. I'll probably have to move that person into a carved out space in the gym. So the likelihood is those spaces are going to be occupied already.
All right. I was just curious. Thank you.
Michelle, please. Wait, unmute yourself.
That she can, go ahead, unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry. I am, you know, just coming up with more questions as I hear the explanations of things. I have more questions than I did an hour ago. And I'm sure I'm not alone. But I did want to say that I very strongly support the sentiments that Monique was expressing. I think that we are in serious danger of making things worse for families if we're not trying to, you know, give people what they need, the services that they need. And unfortunately, it does look like a lot of people need to have childcare, you know, because they are required to go out to work themselves. I'm teaching, I'm, I'm thinking of teachers. You know, if teachers are going to be remote teaching four hours a day, what are their kids going to be doing during that time? If they're, you know, not going to school themselves? Or if they're required to do remote learning and they're in first grade or second grade and they require a parent to sit with them and do the work? So, you know, I've heard a lot of people who have lots of opportunity talk about making learning pods, you know, putting different families' kids together to create some sort of homeschooling programs. And I think that that's the kind of thing that people who have the money and the flexibility can do. What are we doing to give people that don't have the money and the flexibility the opportunities that those pods would provide to parents? And again, I'm going to ask, you know, what has the town offered? What has the mayor's office offered in order to help organize that kind of thing? I mean, again, you know, what we heard about not wanting to replicate school in some sort of remote way, you know, being a problem, that is going to be a problem. We need to reimagine all of it. I mean, I, I don't know how, how we do that from now until September. I know that the state is asking us to put forward a plan, but it seems like the more detailed the plan becomes, the more questions arise. So I, I don't know, I don't feel like I have many answers, but I do want to express that I am feeling as much frustration as anyone else. And I do feel like we need to be very careful, very careful about what we ask people to do.
So I also, you, you, you mentioned something that I actually just saw come up in the chat screen as well. The plan and the more detailed it becomes, the more, it's like whack-a-mole. The more detailed it becomes, the more questions that arise, and the more. I, just kind of a, like, organizational point I want to make. The plan that we put out there is generally not, it's not going to include every detail. Like, for instance, the outdoor learning maps, those will be given internally to the faculty to use. I doubt they're going to show up in the plan itself. So there are a lot of internals that are, are happening. And we have, I have no problem sharing what those will look like to people in the name of transparency, but they might not show up in the actual plan.
Well, if we had to show every minute detail that the, that the district did in a plan, the plan would be 1,000 pages. I mean, if you take all of our policy manuals and all of the, all of the decisions made by all of our principals and administrators, you'd have a thousand or 2,000-page plan. Some districts had five-page plans that they sent to the Department of Education covering the bare bones of the guidelines. We tried to make a real plan and leave some of the details, many of the details, to the schools. It's very difficult. This is the hardest, I've done some hard things in my life. This is the hardest thing I've ever done. And others that have joined me in this have said the same. This is really difficult. But I think it, it does, it does incorporate safety. It does incorporate professional development so our teachers can teach the students. And at the moment, it's the best we've done, but we can do better and we will do better as the month goes on. And as probably much more than the month. I mean, as it stands, middle and high school students won't be in person for the month of September as the plan now stands. That's a lot of time for teachers, all the teachers, to work with the students and to learn and to work on professional development. And doesn't really account for outdoor at all in those schools because there's no one going to be in person in those schools. So all I'm saying, Michelle, is it's very, very difficult. Darcy, can we, can we, could we have Darcy, please?
Yeah, I'm unmuted. I just wanted to say real quick, you know, I've, I've been paying attention to local, state, and national education policy for the better part of a decade, and I've never, ever seen anything remotely like this. I mean, the environment that Scott and the board and the parents and teachers and everyone who's helped with this plan has had to work in order to come up with this plan is utterly unprecedented. The guidance from the state was really more like 100 and some odd page document of stuff you could do if you wanted to, maybe. And the federal government guidance is beyond inadequate, bordering on negligent, saying that if schools don't fully reopen, we'll take your funding. So this is just a pressure cooker for administrators, for teachers, for board members, and for parents who are trying to make what boils down to like potentially life and death decisions for their children and their children's teachers. It's insane. The whole thing is absolutely insane. So, I mean, I just want to thank again everybody who's been involved, all the parents on here looking for answers, asking questions, trying to be part of the solution. Because at the end of the day, all we can all do is work together to try to come up for the, with the best solutions, not just for our own kids, but for all of the kids in our district. Because that's really where the decision-making power has ended up being for a lack, you know, because of a lack of state and federal guidance. So this has really been punted down to the hyper-local level. So for this to work, we are all going to have to band together and do our absolute best for all of our kids. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind, you know, because it's this crazy situation of worrying about your own individual kid's safety and us all trying to work together. So it's just, there's this constant push and pull, and I find myself doing the same exact thing. Like, one hour, I'm like, yeah, they can go back, and the next hour, I'm like, no way, no one can go back. So it's, I think everyone feels that on some level. So, you know, I just want to prioritize for everyone. Our best way through this is going to be together, working together collaboratively and as cordially and professionally as possible to try to get to the best place for all kids.
Darcy, thank you so much for that. I wanted to say earlier, I didn't, my friend lives in Minnesota. Their government gave them a plan by county that was very specific. Your county has this level of retransmission, this level of disease, and this is what you will do. And there's the money to do it. And this county is different. Here's what you will do. None of this wishy-washy nonsense of a guideline that was, and I didn't want to blame them for anything, but I'm at that point right now.
I think it's fair to. Fair to.
Totally fair.
This is life and death, and they've put us into this situation. No one ran for the school board to be making life and death decisions. I certainly didn't. This is ridiculous. Anyway, we're doing the best we can.
And we do have.
We'll be meeting during the month, make it better, everyone, and you will have more chances to talk to us.
I just wanted to say, we do have a board of health. We do have a mayor and a council. We do have a board of commissioners in the county. And I don't feel like working together has been happening at any level. Maybe I'm missing it. I could totally be missing it. It's not like I have my finger on the pulse of everything. But no one is, is looking to make a decision. Everyone is just passing this thing around and.
It's our, it's our.
I'm so sorry.
It's our decision.
I'm so sorry that it's, well, I, I really, I really feel like we are a good bunch of people, but this is way beyond us, to be quite honest. I don't feel like the nine of us can figure this out on our own. And I don't think that it's fair that we're being asked to do so. So that's just what I wanted to say. I feel like everyone is frustrated. Everyone has lots of feelings about this. everyone is frustrated. Everyone has lots of feelings about this. And Darcy is 100% right that we have to work together. But I mean, I don't know who we're working with.
I did want, Matt Hirsch, you have your hand up. I'd like this to be the last speaker for now. We have another public comment section after we go through all of our votes and stuff. So if you could, Matt, you could go on and then we're going to move forward in our, in our, in our agenda.
Oh, thank you, Mark. And thank you to the board too. And thank you to the board too for dealing with this issue. I agree, there's there's a lot of blame going around, but you know, let's, let's try to not get kind of too bogged down in in the blame game here, because I think we all know what leadership looks like on the federal level. And I think we know what the, you know, what the state kind of dropped into the hands of, you know, the local school districts with limited resources. I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Rob and everyone from the, from the input task force for school reentry and Dr. Taylor for including us. And you know, and I did, I'm not sure if what we submitted was actually, was actually recited. But, you know, we kept, we kept these principles really broad for guidance, you know, on this, on this reentry plan. And I just wanted to, you know, quickly rattle them off. That was delivery of high-quality remote obstruction must be supported as a critical priority. Reopening the elementary and secondary schools likely requires different plans. And I think we've been hearing that prioritizing teacher safety and preparation is necessary to meeting student needs. One of the things that I was actually surprised going into, and not, not put off, but just surprised, was, you know, there were, there were very few parameters given to the teachers or the district or the parents or, you know, the student community on kind of what we should expect, you know. So when we walked into this input committee, there was very little to go on as far as, you know, where we could build. So, you know, we could talk about outdoor learning, we could talk about, you know, all kinds of things that we thought would be good ideas. But, you know, we're kind of non-starters for, for, for teachers or unsupportable through facilitary, facilities considerations, you know, and so forth. So that was, you know, that was a really challenging, you know, area in order to give feedback. And I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to point that out, that, you know, when it comes to guidance, you know, there wasn't much. But it also seemed like a lot of people were not on the same page, you know, when it came to, you know, when it came to actually, you know, what, what everybody wanted. There was not a lot of unanimity between the parents. There was, you know, and it was all legitimate. And the teachers had varying concerns as well. Some are parents, so they bring different considerations to the table when it comes to schools reopening. You know, and the last one was, was, and the last, the last principle was testing is a key part of maximizing safety in our schools. I really do encourage the district to work with the county. I have no idea how the district is working with other, how the county is working with other districts, but I'm sure it's really easy to find out. And so, you know, I just, I strongly encourage that the district provides some level of onsite testing. Because that would, I think that would be really strong community presence. Anyway, thank you so much. Thank you.
Matt, thank you as well. We did get your letter from the people on the input committee, yourself and Rob and others, and really appreciated it and read it, read it very seriously. And some of the thoughts that you put into it, like different plans for the Irving Bartle versus middle high school, that was certainly at the top of my, my agenda. And I fought very hard to get something into the plan and, and did as well when we were, when we were debating, debating this. But we really took it very seriously and will continue to. So again, thank you. So, Michelle, you wanted to speak. Why don't you and me?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to ask if there is something that I missed, because I am not hearing, you know, what our our town board of health had to say in any kind of professional capacity. Is there any input that they have given us? Because it's a public health issue. We're not public health experts.
We
What do the experts have to say?
No, no, we have not gotten any official input from, and, and we might, they are also unpaid volunteers. You might, we might be looking towards the county board of health, which are paid, paid employees of the county. And I think perhaps that's who Scott is talking to test about testing. Maybe it's the county commissioners. But we have not gotten any, anything specifically from them.
I see Matt's hand up. Mark, at some point, I just want to wrap up my, my report by saying a few words about my
Okay, so Matt, could you be brief, please? And then we have a long agenda after this as well.
Yes, of course. I'm sorry. No, just, just to respond to what Michelle said, the county board of health, you're right, Mark, is, is volunteer. It's staff, it's administrative staff is county, so it's a county service. Every town has, every town has a local board of health, but it's not, it's not like they're dropping the ball, even though that's a nice
No, they're not. No, they're not. I don't think this is, this fits into their purview. I think it would be the paid county administrators, board of, board of health administrators. I don't think we, though, have gotten guidance from them. But in the interest of time, Scott, could you, could you wrap up? And then we'll go on to our voting, our presentations and then voting.
I've written a number of notes. I have all kinds of information in front of me. But one of my, one of my overall takeaways is that, Mark, you and I need to talk about how we can go another step towards getting community input after the plan is released. I do intend on releasing everything on schedule tomorrow. I do hope that everyone will, will look carefully at what we've written and consider everything that we've talked about today. And just know that we've got another month to work through the plan and we will work with you on that. Okay, I promise. There was no intention to, to hide anything or not be transparent. It's just a matter of finding a better way to get more input.
We have almost six weeks, actually, five plus weeks. So we'll be working on it. Okay, so I'd like to move forward then, please go into the item, back to item number nine. Sorry, my notes are a little decrepit. Okay, so item nine, curriculum instruction. Michelle, could you, could you give us a very, it's very late and we've been at it for a while, a very brief summary of the curriculum committee meeting. And then you have three, only three items. And unmute yourself. You're muted.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay.
I went through a lot of this last week, so I'm just going to read it out really quickly. We've got an update from our supervisor Rodriguez about social justice unit development. We had a discussion concerning the Highland Park Social Emotional Learning Handbook, which Scott made available to the board members on the drive, so everyone can look at that. We reviewed the agenda and in the agenda, we have the items listed, which are the ESSA CAT. That is the Correction Action, Corrective Action Plan. That's also available on the drive for review. And we did discuss the middle school virtual orientation for incoming sixth graders. The health curriculum was articulated among grades K through 12, and it's still under, sorry, under construction. And it will be reviewed August 10th, I believe. Scott is going to give us an update on the SOAR program. And we discussed certain middle and high school students that are in need of academic support and how they will be given that support. And I think that's a cohort of about 50 students that, I guess through the spring, did not thrive in our virtual learning setting and needed some additional assistance. So we discussed that and how the guidance counselors would assist. And the last thing we discussed, which we didn't have much time to discuss, was the review of the high school honors and AEP entrance criteria. And that was a bigger discussion than we could really finish in our meeting. So that's it for my report.
Thank you very much. And, and the, the three items? You're muted, Michelle. Sorry.
Sorry. No, I'm trying to be careful here. It's too careful. That was the ESSA CAT plan that I mentioned, number one. Number two is the Virtual Welcome Academy for incoming sixth graders. That was number two. That's given through the teen center. And also number three is approval of the university graduates and students for the middle school science, I'm sorry, middle school and elementary, I believe, science curriculum. It's a person who would be housed at the Bartle School with our current teacher, Ashlyn Stadolski. And that's from September to December of 2020.
Michelle, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Or comments? Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to go through the, oh, and I did want to correct something. The question was about the board of health. We did have a board of health member on our committee. And she gave us, Sarah Kelly, she gave us a tremendous amount of information and input. And I certainly appreciate her work and I know Scott and others did. So sorry for my missing, missing that. So anyway, I'm going to go on. Finance and facilities. So items one through five, items one through six are our usual Treasury report, secretary report, certifications, budget transfers. Seven is contractors for professional services. And these are two standard contractors we use every year. Item eight is in district handicap transportation contracts for each around $43,000. Item nine is first reading of a resolution for the refunding of the bond ordinance. And we did this once before, two or three years ago, and saved over approximately, I think, $150,000 a year as the interest rates went down. We're refinancing again. We'll save $40,000 a year. So we're, and I want to thank Linda, saving the taxpayers' money. The bonds move on and move on. But we will pay off the same principal, but save $40,000 a year in interest. And at the next meeting, it'll go into second reading. We will have our, our bond person meeting with us and giving us information about exactly what's going to be happening. But the board and the community really appreciates this. Item 10 is a displaced out of district placement. So this is a displaced student who are placing in Newark, New Jersey at the rate of $14,259. Item 11 is the digital, digital divide discretionary grant application. This is a state plan comparable and perhaps part of CARES to give us money for additional equipment in this case during the pandemic. It will allow us to free up CARES money that we had initially thought we would use for equipment to be used for personal protective equipment. So they are definitely giving us some amounts of money to help us through this, and this is part of it. We have to submit a plan that, that is for the reduction in state aid. We're losing $74,000 of initially approved state aid. It is actually about the same or slightly more than we got last year, but it is reduced state aid. And we have to approve a budget adjustment to the state. We are accepting additional extraordinary special education aid. We spent a lot more on special education. We're getting more extraordinary special education funding to the tune of $580,000. So that's very, very good. And then item 14 is in effect, pushing, moving the money around so that we're, we're taking $280,000 from the amount above which we budgeted for the extraordinary special aid money and moving into the following other accounts. Item 15 is approval of the Highland Park Education Foundation grants. And again, as always, thank you to them. $6,000 is going to fuse student studio challenges at the middle school. And $3,842 is going to teach town kindergarten through fourth grade ABA classes. Oh, and thank you for the teachers, Gina Donatoff and DeeDee Deisher, for putting in for these and helping our students. And number 16 is what we were all here to discuss today. And that's the board approval of the COVID-19 school reentry plan, which again, we'll be working on for the next five weeks and be making adjustments to. And I hope we'll make significant improvements, particularly in the area of remote instruction. So that's my report. And do any board members have any questions or comments, please? Okay, if not, I'm going to go on. And Chris, you have the floor to do the personnel and communication with, with Ann, not in attendance.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, so we, in addition to the agenda items, we discussed one recommendation that came out of the Equity and Excellence Committee, which is to have a Dean of Diversity and Inclusion. And we'd like to add our recommendation to that. So this is a position that probably would be a faculty member who would, in addition to their regular duties, get a stipend. So a Schedule B position to handle initiatives in this area. And so then I'll move on to the agenda items. So it's the summer, so there are a lot of things going on with personnel. We sad to accept the recommendation, the resignation of Ms. LaViola, who's the guidance counselor for the high school. And we're excited to very, have Jada Gore proposed as school counselor for the high school. Very strong background. We, number two is resignation of Min Kim. Number four is approval of a part-time ESL teacher. Hu Huang. And five is renewing the emergency certification of our media specialist, Ms. Schmidt. There are two sidebar agreements. One is the coaching positions. I think that came out of your committee, Mark. That if the season, fall seasons don't go on, then we're agreeing to pay the coaches 25% for the summer.
Correct.
And we're also agreeing to pay for the, this is, you'll see this again in item 21, the middle school yearbook has been done on a volunteer basis for several years. So it's a small stipend now for the middle school yearbook. Who's doing that again, Scott?
At the yearbook?
Yeah.
Well, it's at Bartle, T R M O.
Yeah, T R M O, yeah. So then number eight is summer academic support programs. Number nine, compensation for a classroom move. 10 and 11, professional development and curriculum writing. And then 13, additional instruction. And then 14, and some of the following items are the result of the approval of the contract, if I understood correctly, where we now have the final salary figures. So there are quite a few items about that. 17, approval of teacher associates. Paraprofessionals, number 18. Extra professional, paraprofessional duties, number 20. And then Schedule B appointments, such as the yearbook and other activities, number 21. And then those teachers that participated in the summer hiring committees are compensated in number 22. Okay, I think that's about it.
Okay. Does anybody have questions? Comments?
I'll turn it up.
Rob?
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around number six, which is the sidebar agreement for the coaching staff. I believe you said that was a 25% payment for coaching, even if the sports don't occur this fall. And I think that's a, sort of like a good faith payment towards those coaches. Is that correct? Because, you know, that's sort of like something that they count on.
It's, Rob, Rob, Scott, do you want to clarify?
I'll clarify. The 25% is compensation for summer conditioning work these coaches are currently doing.
They're, they're out there every day if you, if you go out for a jog around the track.
Okay, so that's for, for summer thing. So, right now, we're not, we haven't looked at what we would do in the fall for those Schedule B positions.
And what I've done is I've, I've communicated to the coaching staff, the A D, and Mr. Lassiter, and anybody else involved in sports that we're going to wait until the 24th to make final decisions on the fall. We don't know what the fall's going to look like yet for sports.
Okay, thank you. I think I just misheard something during the description.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, so, oh, and now I'm going to move the items for the first and second reading for policy. So, where there are, there are two new policies. One is number 1648, Restart and Recovery Plan. We need a policy for that. It's M, M means mandatory. And then initially numbered 1649, but then renumbered to 1650 is the Remote Learning Plan, and that's also mandatory. So, those are first readings. And then for second reading, we have the 2,200 curriculum content, 2,260 affirmative action programs, and 2,440 A academic recovery. And Darcy, I'm sorry, I didn't get to your changes on those. I apologize, but we will. Or, you know, your wording changes is just too crazy today. And I think I might be missing something. I lost my agenda. Hold on. Let me just go through it to make sure. Pardon me, everybody. I'm scrolling as quickly as I can. I have both printed and, old school, printed and online. So, in the online, I just don't want to miss number one. Oh, and as far as the policy committee report, pardon me. That was, that was, and that's what I was missing. That was the, that was the, the discussions on 1648, Restart and Recovery Plan. We did not have a remote plan from either of our policy groups yet, but it did come over the weekend, and that's one of the things I worked on. So, we do have both of those new ones. So, that is the policy committee report. Any questions, please? Darcy?
Yeah, I had a couple of quick ones on 1650.
Yes.
One thing that seemed to be, to me, to be missing on 1650 is a statement about the possibility that we could go fully remote based on changes in the state or county circumstances.
Oh, that's very good, to propose that in addition to putting it in our recovery plan.
Yeah, there's no language, I couldn't find any.
I didn't think, I didn't think of doing that. That's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I know Chris will, Chris will certainly agree. We've talked so much about it.
And then the other thing was, well, there are two other kind of quick things. The part about a student may be asked to submit to the COVID screening process. So, does that just mean the like, you know, you have to get your temperature taken?
Yes.
That you're, okay.
Yes.
So, maybe that could be clarified a little bit because I didn't, that, I wasn't clear. Does that mean they have to be tested? Does that mean?
That's fair. Could you email me both of those and any, any others?
Absolutely. And then the last one was just about the academic assessment because there's mention of an academic assessment that it can be subjected to. And that, you know, raised another whole host of questions about what are we going to do in that regard? We've talked a lot about wanting to front load a lot of social emotional stuff and not just have kids come back and hit them with a bunch of tests and assessments. So, you know.
Mark?
Okay.
Mark, can, can you insert those as either chat, chat changes or comments for the Office 20 meeting we have?
Yes, of course. Of course, I will.
Thank you.
I, I don't know. I'll maybe try to do it tomorrow, but I'll, I'll get to it as soon as Darcy gets me this stuff.
Yeah, and I apologize for sending you the other stuff so late, Mark. It just totally slipped my mind until I started reviewing.
No, it's fine. Um, okay. So, Monique, do you have anything for Equity and Excellence?
I actually had a hand raised. I just wanted to ask about 1649. Was that also up for first?
No, 1649 is now number 1650.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, yes, 1650.
Yes, that number changed underfoot.
Yes, you did say that. So, and I did email you about this, like, under section 2A. And just the timeframe that parents, that is required for parents to request a change to full remote learning.
Right.
Do you have flexibility on that, the 21-day?
Oh, the 21 versus 14-day?
Right, I think.
And I did, I did write in, I did write in some wording, but I, I need to revisit it. I, I'm sorry, I need to revisit it and put in some additional words based on what you asked me. And the words, the words will take the form of, I, I didn't necessarily want to lower the number of days, but I wanted to give some discretion to the administration to allow people to submit with less time. We could go, I initially had 14 days, and it just seemed, it, it seemed to put the district in a difficult place in doing the planning.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, but I just feel like if we have to be prepared for a sudden transition, let's say due to health concerns, right?
Right.
We probably would be okay with accommodating, you know, sevile requests in 14 days.
I'm going to craft some words. I, I hear you. I'm going to craft some words that, that maybe are somewhat legalese, but I'll craft some words around that the administration will give parents the ability to, to at least put their children into remote, and maybe both, both ways, but certainly into remote with, 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 with reasonable request and without, without requiring the full 21-days. So, in other words, give them the opportunity to move the child if the situation on the ground gets worse and we're not moving quickly enough as a district.
Or if the family has their own person, it may not necessarily be something happening in their school or.
Yes, yes, I get it. Right, but, but in general, not, not based on COVID, but simply based on the family's need that, that the, the school will give them, especially once they've opted. I, I think the real issue is they've opted for in, in person, and they want to move to remote. There's already some words there for the principal to be able to make the change, but maybe I'll make the word stronger, that the principals won't, so I'm thinking legalese, the principal won't deny them based on any kind of reasonable request.
Yeah, that's the second part of it. I guess I, I was just concerned about the request having to be submitted at least 21 days.
Yes, I understand that. Okay, I'll make some changes.
Robert Zabish has his hand up.
Yes, I see that. Rob?
Yeah, in 1648, I know we reference face coverings, but has there been any move in terms of having a reference in either dress code or the dress code within the school policies that would limit any political statements or other things on any face coverings that are, you know, I, I would prefer not to have, as face coverings become more personalized, to have some limits on how they could be personalized.
I don't want to start a storm, but we're providing face coverings. And I think the expectation of the administration is that the students and, at least the students, will wear the provided face coverings. So, we're giving, we're giving every student and every staff member three reusable, washable face coverings. And the hope is that, my hope is the administration will make that the standard so that students don't wear bandanas or have stuffs under their noses or whatever, but that would be our standard. And again, I don't want to start a political storm over that, but I think that contrasts with my niece who teaches in Albany, where they were just told in, in a, in a district which, which has great needs, they would tell, we're not providing anything for anyone. And we're really trying to do something here. So, that's, that was, again, that came from Jim Polis, who's our emergency coordinator. And he said that's what the county is doing with county staff, you know, county employees. And we thought that was a reasonable thing to do. So, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I think it's time for us to vote.
Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Yes?
I don't have anything, but I just did want to make sure we did say Equity and Excellence.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, I thought I did. I'm sorry.
Okay. I think we need to flip the order.
I'm losing, I'm losing track of my brain. It's too many hours, and I apologize. I did call you, Monique, and then we got sidetracked. I apologize.
That's okay. I have nothing to add, but I do want to thank personnel for supporting the Equity Chair position.
I think it's very, very important for the, for the, for the district to do this. And it's going to be, you know, it's, it's something that falls outside any, you know, any of the currently defined roles. And, yeah, great idea.
And, and I, I wanted to add, it came to the finance committee, and we all felt so strongly about it. We upped, we upped the ante. That is to say, we asked the district to pay more money for this position because we feel that strongly. And, and we do. So, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Are we ready for our voting? Okay, so, curriculum. Linda, could you take the roll, please?
We need a motion.
Yes, please, Michelle. Sorry. Say I'm starting to get very tired.
We all are.
We started the meeting at 6:30. Michelle, wait. Mute.
Sorry about that. Okay, this will be quick. I would like to move items number one through three under curriculum and instruction.
We have a second.
I guess.
Thank you, Darcy. Now, Linda, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan? I'm sorry, Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move items in finance, one through 16. Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Are you ready for roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola? Mr. Ruslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And so, Chris, if you could move personnel, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through, what is it, 20?
21?
23.
23.
23, right. I'll second that. And Linda, could you take the roll, please?
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Abstained from 18, and yes for the rest.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm going to move items one through three in policies. I'm sorry, two and three in policies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yeah.
Mr. Ruslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, so item number 12 is the liaison reports. So, Scott, Municipal Drug and Alcohol Alliance?
Nothing, and nothing for library either. Those are the two reports I usually.
Okay, and I have nothing. Rob, do you have anything from the HPEF?
That meeting was postponed, I believe. Scott, there's one coming up, though. What is that, next week or the week after?
The week after, the 18th.
Right.
Chris, do you have anything from Universal Access?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Ann's not here. Monique, what about the parent special education group?
No, nothing to report there. And while I'm at it, I will just say nothing to report on parents or students' colors as well.
Okay. Rob, our Board of Health? Rob, you need to.
I have nothing to report this evening for Board of Health or for the Green Team.
Okay, Darcy? New Jersey school boards?
Nothing.
And Michelle? Middlesex County?
Yeah, I, I did attend a virtual conference, I guess, or, I don't know what they called it. But it turns out to be, well, I was hoping that it was going to be helpful in our plans of reentry because they talked about remote learning.
Right.
And that was the title. Unfortunately, it turned out to be kind of an advertisement for a private remote learning company. Yeah.
No, I.
Sorry, what?
Sorry, go ahead, Michelle. I'm just fending because the administrators of the state, if not the country, have been barraged with marketing materials. It's crazy.
Oh, I, I've seen in my own board account, I guess everyone also seen them too, like offers for branded masks and all kinds of nonsense. So, yeah, it's a, you know, it's a feeding frenzy. And this unfortunately was a waste of time. So, half an hour into it, I got out and I complained to the organizer at the school boards. And they apologized, they didn't realize that that wasn't clear. They said, oh, you know, this was kind of infomercial, and we meant it to be. And so, I'm so sorry you didn't catch that. So, it was my fault.
No, no.
No, I'm being facetious. Anyway, that's all I have to report. I'm really sorry, I don't have more.
Um, so, we only plan to have one more public comment, and I have no president's report. And I'd like if we could do old business and new business and strike number 13, and then, which I don't think we, I hope we have older new business, and then go right to number 17 for additional public comment. Is the board okay with that? Okay, I hear a resounding yeses. So, I have no president's report. Does anyone have old business? Does anyone have new business? Okay, so we're on to public comments. So, if you do have public comment, please raise your hand. Otherwise, we are going to adjourn the meeting. Tara?
Tara, can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, I just made this whole speech. Um, Linda, do you need my address again?
No, you've given it once.
Okay, I just want to say how I think it's great that you are paying the coaches because they are working very hard. I know my son has been involved with doing Zoom stuff with the wrestling coach, so I'm really happy that you're doing that. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Tara. All right. If no one else, then I'm going to move item number, I missed it here, 18, I believe, adjournment. I moved to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, do we need a, we don't need a roll, do we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you all. And thank you to the public for being here. We really appreciate the input.
Thank you.
Mark, you, can you stay for a minute, Mark?
I can indeed stay. And thank you, board members.
Bye.
Bye-bye.